Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Silver.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
We're joined by Councilmember Schultz via phone. The order of things tonight is that we're going to go to the Ward Three night first, and that's going to be followed by the budget public hearing, and then we'll get to our regular meeting agenda, which will include a chance for public comment period. So I just want to take a brief moment to explain to people how this is going to work, and then I'll turn to Councilmember Robinson, and we'll go to Ward Three night. But what happens is, we go rotate through each different ward in the city, and there's a ward night for everybody, and we have a discussion with, in this case, Ward Three residents this evening. First thing, it's a little bit less formal, we don't use the timer. If you have a particular question or a comment, make it, we might have an answer, we might be able to point to a city staff member who's in the room who might have an answer. So it's a little less formal, a little bit more ability to have a little bit of a dialogue and convey some information. And if we could keep that to only Ward Three residents. Then we'll go to the public hearing on the city budget, and so I know there may be some bleed over, people who are living Ward Three and want to make a comment. I would encourage you, if you have budget comments, to say your comments for Ward Three, and then comment during the public hearing, because that's the public record. So to the extent that you can, I'd appreciate it if you have young kids and you've got to get them home, or whatever it is, and you want to make a quick budget comment in your Ward Three comments, we'll of course understand. And then for anybody who isn't here to talk either about Ward Three, or the budget public hearing that just has a general comment, we'll have public comment after the hearing on the budget. So it gets a little complicated, but we'll try and keep it all straight. So with that said, I'll turn to Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you all. Great that you're all here. This is lovely to see so many Ward Three residents, and I can't wait to hear what you have to say. As the mayor said, we have our treasurer, and our -- Suzanne, what's your title?
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy City Manager, and our City Manager, and our Chief of Police, and who am I missing? I saw Sarah Daines just a couple of minutes ago.
Yolanda.
Yolanda's the Finance Director, so there are people here to answer questions if they come up at this time. And without further ado, I'm very glad to see you, and I hope that you're feeling comfortable enough to come up and speak.
And so I guess we had to sign up, and we'll start with folks who signed up, but we'll also then go to anybody who didn't sign up, who is a resident of Ward Three who wishes to speak. And when you do speak, if you can come up to the lectern, and the microphone will pick you up, so your remarks are preserved for posterity. And if you're particularly tall or particularly short, there's a button on the top there that you can push to raise or lower that thing, it raises up and down about eight inches.
I also wanted to thank the co-op for providing snacks and drinks, and also the city had pitched in as well, so thanks to both of them.
And so we had three people sign up, and those are Emily Van Loon, Byrne Kelly, and Kaye Daniels-Cullen. So Emily, if you want to start things off.
My name is Emily Van Loon, and I am a resident of Sycamore Avenue, 711 Sycamore. And what I passed out to you guys is a picture of a house that is currently on Sycamore that for more than ten, I'd say more than ten years, we've been trying to get the, obviously, the disrepair and the issues that are facing this house addressed. The neighborhood has, you know, tried to work really hard with the city and with the brothers that own the property, and tried to kind of get it moved forward so that we could get the condition of the house resolved. And the house either returned to the neighborhood in which it, you know, belongs, or some other kind of approach. I think what brings me here today is that the neighborhood is beginning to feel really frustrated about the pace of which this is happening. You can see, when you look at the house, that it really, really looks horrible. We've got this blue tarp that's on top of it, and all the birds have spread pieces of tarp all over the neighborhood. Every nest in the neighborhood has blue tarp entwined in it. We've actually had some birds that have gotten the tarp all wrapped around them, and not been able to free themselves from all the string. We've got neighbors that have had to look out their windows for ten years. One of them's here tonight, looking at this. We're concerned now, because kids in the neighborhood are beginning to come out in the good weather. We've got a lot of teenagers on the street, and this is kind of calling for hide-and-go-seek and all kinds of activity that we really don't want to happen in the house. And so what I'm asking for is an update from the city on what's going on, and what we can expect probably within the next thirty days in terms of the house. Thank you. We've also been working with Historic Tacoma. I think Diane is here, and Lorraine, yeah, is here, and they might have something to say about it as well. So, and here's a picture for all of you guys to see, so this is what we're talking about.
Emily, do you want the feedback now, or should we wait until the people who have things to say about the house finish speaking?
I think that's your call, whatever. Maybe it would be better for everybody to speak, and I don't know, it's up to you guys, whatever it is. I'm just representing the neighborhood.
Right.
And so I think...
We have Sarah Daines, our Director of Community Development, Housing and Community Development. We have Ron Wiley, who's here, and those two are the two who are working with the owners of the home.
Right.
To help move it along. It's an unusual, I think a creative situation in this regard, because the brothers are acting in concert with both the city and another entity, the Adventist Community Services, to make the kind of decisions that they haven't been able to make up until this point. And just for informational purposes, the house has been offered for sale, there have been some offers on that house, and the city and Adventist Community Services are considering those offers to see how to go forward, and that's all good news. That's all very positive progress forward. I understand the frustrations, I'm glad you picked thirty days, because is today the 11th? Is today the 11th?
I believe so.
And I think that there's a thirty days from now, or one month from now, on May 11th, there's a kind of a, there's a moment in time when the, now here, Sarah will have to correct me, because I don't think I have this quite right, but when the initial period for consideration of the offers is over. And so, do I have that right, Sarah? And so at that time, there may well be a decision before then, or by then, of some sort. You know, things move slowly, and this is not...
Well, I think they've been moving, this is way past slowly. I mean, this has been decades.
It has been decades.
This has been decades.
And the city's been involved for about a year, or maybe more than that. So it took decades for the city to get involved, and now it's been over a year that they've been involved. And we have, this is an interesting, it's a conundrum, really. We want to grant people the right to their private ownership of property, and yet, if it gets out of hand, then the government's called upon to try to rectify the situation. How does that work? We have a number of places in the city that are in bad shape. I'm glad to report that the house just around the corner from me, on Hancock, which had been in serious disrepair, and six months ago, I think would be fair estimate of time, no one knew who owned it, even though there's been a great deal of research to try to find that out. But it's now changed hands, been rebuilt, and it's just on the market. So that's a positive story. There's a house right behind me, on 36 Philadelphia, and the owner of that house has been in jail, in contempt of court, because he wouldn't fix it up. And the house is still no, he sold it to some entity which doesn't seem to exist. And so these legal tangles are, can be really sticky. I'm hopeful that the house on Sycamore will move, I know it's slow, but I'm hopeful that it'll move quickly now, and the thirty days is a good, like I say, it's a good
A good point.
Number, because that's the end of something.
Okay.
Maybe...
Lorraine, do you want, Ron, do you want to say something?
I was going to suggest that either Sarah or Ron might want to add something.
Right.
Sarah? I'd like you to go ahead.
And that's, Sarah, if you have anything to add.
Basically, Councilmember Robinson is correct. When we initially solicited a request for bids for the property, there was a ninety-day window where the bids would remain valid. And we've been working with the property owners and their representative to review those bids, and to come to some decision as to whether or not they're acceptable. The challenge we have right now is that there are two brothers that own equal shares in the property. The city represents one brother, the other brother is represented by Mr. Wiley, and without consensus reached on the part of both parties, it's very challenging to sell half a house. And the May 11th date, I believe, is correct.
Ron, do you want to add anything?
Is there consensus of something?
There is a consensus, I think. I would like to be a positive thinker. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to a few people. I frankly think the neighborhood has been pretty moderate, and quite frankly, pretty long-suffering. And the meetings that I've been to have been quite civilized. And I also want to say that when the group and Peter Franchell asked me to get involved, I think there was some question in terms of what kind of a beast have we got here, me and the city. Well, me will say that working with the city, in this particular instance, has been very good, very commendable. I want to thank Sarah, I think she's been very, very good to work with, and as far as I'm concerned, the Attorney's Office, Marjorie, all of them. So I am very positive. I think we're about there. What we have before us in terms of this bid, I personally think is undoable, and I am advocating that the brothers do it. Long before I knew about this meeting, well, exaggerating, not long, but two or three days before I knew this, I talked with Brian, and at that point, I would have put, in terms of the outcome of that conversation, I would have put my money that it was better than fifty-fifty, they would go with this current bid. Because of this meeting, and because of talking with some folks, more than I've talked with my wife in the last three days, I won't mention any names, but the fact is that I did call today and make sure that they had seen the proposal, and that they had had a chance to talk. And while there's a couple of tweaks that I think Sarah and I can be useful in doing, I can tell you that I expect that we're going to be in business on this bid. And I don't know how, Sarah, you feel, what the, I haven't looked systematically at the legal aspects of this, but I don't know, in a sense, what we're waiting for, May 11th for. I mean, let's get on with it.
Don't have to wait, yeah.
Let me, can I just say one other thing? Well, here's my friend, who knows the inside of this house better than anybody else, Councilman Siemens. You want a question?
You and Sarah, and Councilmember Robinson have talked a lot in generalities that are all aimed at raising everyone's optimism. I think what I would want to know, if I were sitting out there and living in the neighborhood, is what is this deal? I mean, other than selling the house, is this still going to be there with a blue tarp? Is it plans to fix it up, knock it down, burn it? What's going to happen?
Well, let me tell you. I'm glad you asked that question at that point, because I was just going to talk about, I'm not apologizing for, before I just said, "Let's go with another blue tarp." I don't think more birds need to get wound up in tarp, so more nesting materials out of the blue tarp. I really have looked for some alternatives that would serve us even better than yet another blue tarp. And quite frankly, I haven't been able to come up with a whole lot, but this is kind of tied to my point of, "Let's get moving." I sort of think that we can tie this bid into an appropriate treatment of that roof that is something more than the blue tarp.
So what's the answer to this question?
Yeah, my question is not just the short term of enclosing a house, but what does the sale, you know, what is the organization or person?
I'm going to have a, let me tell you what, from the brothers, I'm going to have a definite, right now, I think it's almost there. Give me a little chance to tweak, not months, not years, but at the outside, two weeks, at the outside.
Okay. So then, let's say that they decide to move forward with this deal. This group, at least I don't know what the deal is.
Well, I'm going to leave that, Sarah.
Is it someone that's going to renovate the house? Is it, you know, the fire department wants to use it as a practice house?
No, the house is...
That's an upgrade of thinking. Go for it.
We have been advised by a number of individuals that the house can be restored or renovated. So the bids were issued with the expectation that whoever acquires them will renovate them, and they have to submit a schedule as far as when that renovation would be completed. It's difficult to tell exactly how long it would take to finish up the construction work because of the required permits that must be secured before they can begin work. But if we were to get agreement in terms of the bid that we've received, I would anticipate being able to close on the property within thirty days, and proceed from there with a new property owner, who, if we're talking about the same party, is quite excited about it, and is eager to get going, and recognizes that the longer the roof remains in its current conditions, the more damage is going to result.
And then I guess the other thing I'd like to hear tonight, not necessarily from you, the two of you, but from Historic Tacoma, is this being in the historic district, is Historic Tacoma going to be able to help to get the permits through in a timely fashion so that we can get hammer and nail together here?
Could I just say one thing before I sit down, please?
I have no authority here, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, wow. Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
My dear friend here. Let me just say about this bid, there's a couple things Sarah didn't say that I think is relevant. One of them is that they have already done three, I think it's three properties.
Number two.
At least three properties in Tacoma Park. Okay. Number two, they've apparently got the finance, there's no asking of the sellers to take paper, so they've got experience, finances, and interest. What more can we ask?
Thank you.
Thanks for the positive reaction from the sellers.
Thanks. Lorraine, you want to say something?
Yeah. Terry, I just wanted to comment a little bit. Yes, of course, you know, we'll be here to help out in every way. I think with respect to historic area work permit, that's not an issue. They're restoring the house, that's great, that's fast, that's easy. Department of Permitting Services is possibly another story, but we witnessed the Hancock House be restored, and it's looking great. So it's doable. Yeah. So trust me, I'm going to be watching this one. I really want to make sure this is moving finally in the right direction, and it's very positive how it's ending, and I appreciate that, because things can get very ugly at the end if nothing happens, but I'm very optimistic, and I really do want to see it close in thirty days, because we're concerned about the house. We found a house rescue person, that's great. They're hard to come by, they're exceptional people, they know how to do it. So let's get on with it, and save the neighborhood and save the house. So we'll be watching.
Is it going to end up as a single-family home, or is it going to be multi-family?
I don't know the answer to that, but I suspect single-family, but I honestly don't know what, I haven't met the, you know, the people who are bidding, I look forward to, so maybe Sarah knows the answer to that.
Thanks.
The property is located in R-60 Zone, which is single-family. They would have the option at some point in time, if they wanted to establish an accessory apartment on the property, but that would require them to live there. So the short answer, it's a single-family zone.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I think we've covered that topic for the moment. Okay, sure, go ahead. And then we'll get back to the list, but if we finish this one first, that might be good.
Hi, I'm Christine Roof. I live right next to the house in question, and I saw Terry spending the hottest day in July cleaning the house out. So I've lived next to this house for twenty-two years, and it's been very sad to document. I mean, it was in fairly good shape when I moved in twenty-two years ago, and I've just watched the decline out my kitchen window. And I'm really glad to hear the latest development that's very exciting for the neighborhood, and really thank Emily and other folks that have worked on this issue. A couple things I'd like to add to the request. I work for the federal government, so I'm very well aware about the slowness of getting permits approved. I guess if you guys can do everything in your power, if this goes forward, of trying to use your political power to, which I know can happen, to get our, those permits put to the top of the list. I know we at EPA never like to say that one permit goes ahead of another, but a phone call here and there will often change the order of things in the triage. Second, I don't know, in terms of the agreement that you write, or the conditions that you do accept for whatever bid, hopefully it will be this one you've been talking about, is there some way for you to consider putting in some conditions, that if the time period, could we, you know, indirectly work with you to make sure that time periods get put in there, so that there's some clauses that if X doesn't happen, something else happens? I know that with housing and development stuff can, you can run into delays, but I think stuff happens, and I think we'd hate to have something hold up the process and wait another year or nine months. So I realize that sounds pretty big, but maybe there's some clauses that you could put in there that would help move the, all of the ten or fifty steps along that have to be done until the construction starts. And then I guess, once we celebrate this next phase, I would like you to keep the neighborhood still informed about the process, in particular, those of us that are immediately on each side. We realize that in order to get this housing area, the house restored, we'll have to live with a lot of noise and commotion, and we'd like to, I'd like to work with you personally to try to reduce that impact, realizing in the end it'll be a really nice house. So thanks.
I think that when you hear that noise, you should celebrate every sound you hear.
Yes. I think that's true. I think that's true, but I do, I think that that's, you know, just, that's a PS on top of all of this. So I, I think this is, I'm really glad to hear Ron say that we're very reasonable. I've been to many public meetings where we're moderate, where people have thrown tomatoes at us, so that was, that was a good...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Christine. This is your only time up here, Kaye.
Just a comment on the house on Hancock. I believe it was May 18th last year that Faith Stern brought it to our attention at the SS Carroll meeting. By the time I found out that the city was going to demolish it, I think that was what was going to happen. I got SS Carroll, I got Historic Tacoma involved. That house, I believe, has a "for sale" sign on it today. It is spectacular, it is gorgeous, whoever did the work went right in, and that was a house that looked like it was going to fall over. So getting Historic Tacoma involved is a good thing, they will make it happen, because none of them want to lose any houses in Tacoma Park. And I thank them for that.
Thanks, yes. Okay, now, back to the list, Byrne Kelly.
Good evening, thanks for hosting us. My name is Byrne Kelly, I live at 307 Circle Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. There's a trail on a paper street between Cockwell to Circle, and then we have a nice new light that arrived there from Mars. And further up, we have the solar lights that don't function quite as well between Poplar and Guti, and then we get to the other side of Guti, and we have nothing. We have half a loaf, we never got the loaf fully baked, we have no lights. And my daughter, among other people, frequent that path, it's a great path, I encourage more circulation paths like that. It's heavily used for people who walk up to Shoppers in that area, from my area, and a lot of dog walkers and kids. But it's not very well maintained, we had an Eagle Scout project help make the side between Poplar and Guti improve, and got rid of a lot of poison ivy, but the other side washes out. It doesn't have any checks, any things to stop the erosion from occurring, and we, city has poured a lot of gravel in there, but, you know, that's a paper street circle going all the way over to Woodland. It goes through the property, the Washington Christian-McGuffin School, it's not their property, it's city property, and would be a great place for an LA of trees and some lighting, and an enhancement to make it safer. So I would like the city to consider, especially for public safety reasons, for the darkness factor, that you don't go from a lighted path to an unlighted path, in order to get through from Guti to Woodland. So that's my Ward Three and partially Ward Two issue.
Byrne, the lights between Poplar and Guti are solar lights, is that right?
Yes, and you can ask Darrell how well that's worked, that's a different story.
Is it a maintenance issue, or is it just that the technology's not designed for that purpose?
I'm going to defer to Darrell on that. I just know that we did get an improved light, we had to go to Pepco to get a permanent light that comes on with darkness down at my end, and it's terrific, even though it looks like it came from another planet, it really does a good job of lighting. And we have security problems down there, and I maintain that end of the street, and, you know, in all forms, chief. And I like to, you know, help keep my neighborhood, which is, has a distinct history, also once known as Hell's Bottom, and I'd like to keep it on the improvement, on the up and up, and I appreciate so far what's been done. Let's try and get that whole path completed, if we could.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
This one will be longer.
Get the switch, do it.
All right, Kaye Daniels-Cullen, and I'm representing, President, and representing SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. First, I want to thank you all for hosting, and I think I'll speak about that in a second too. But I also want to thank everybody, especially those from SS Carroll, because there's a whole bunch of you out there, but everybody from Ward Three for showing up tonight. I really appreciate that, it's really, it's really exciting. And the Ward Two people also, it's okay for you all to be here as well.
Thank God.
It's fine. So first, sincerest congratulations to Jesse Carpenter for being named the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association Clerk of the Year. She, yes! If you read your Tacoma newsletter, and you open it up, right down there below the fold, there she was. So she should be named that every year, because one would have to search far and wide to find anyone more dedicated to her job and to our fair city than Jesse Carpenter, and I really appreciate everything she does for the city and for me, when I have these little special requests that kind of come across her desk. Secondly, thank all of you so very much for these special ward nights. It gives the community the chance to see our city government in action on a really grassroots level, and isn't that really where it all began, 235 years ago today? I do believe the idea was from our mayor, Bruce Williams, during the last election, and I acknowledge him for his election promise and his follow-up, because I think we had all that discussion going on during the last election. And now, that was the sweet stuff, here we go with the hard stuff. Thirdly, I know you're going to receive this request from the Tacoma Junction Task Force, but I'm going to make a re-request, since this idea was one that was asked for by the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association at least three years ago, when we were attempting to make the junction function. to make the junction function. Please, and I'm pleading, I'm going to read this in dramatic form, begging, using my loud outdoor voice, and I'm just short of tying a large rock to my ankle and jumping off the top of the community center if nothing happens again about this request. Yes, yes. It's better than being naked on someone's desk, so that was the other thing I was going to give.
Too much information.
Please have the State Highway Administration come in and replace all of the lights at the junction, including Sycamore Avenue and the Philly Carroll Avenue lights, and bring them into the 21st century. I'm told that they're too old for Montgomery County to resequence or sequence in the first place, and the county won't do anything with them until the state brings them into the 21st century. Catch 22, this won't happen until that happens, but that won't happen until this does. Mayor Williams, City Council and staff, you all can cause, you all can cause changes in this issue. The staff, the mayor and the city. I'm going to also call on you to use your Rolodexes, or I guess you don't call them Rolodexes anymore, speed dials, to call people that can make a difference here. I'm asking for action now, not later. This has been going on too long, and this is also a decades-old issue, to be still an issue. With 21st century lights, the county can come in and make changes that need to be made to sequence them properly, because as an example, if you ever watch the lights, this is just two examples, there's a 13-second delay when all the lights are red, all the way around, and there is no walk light anywhere to be seen. Now, if you're pretty quick, you can get all the way across the street. Secondly, the light at Sycamore turns red for the 410 people, the light right in front of the Co-op is pure green. All those people are just sitting there waiting to get past Sycamore, and no one necessarily has come out to make the turn off of Sycamore. That's just two of the little issues, those aren't even all of them. So, just, I mean, it's just something that really needs to happen, it needs to happen now. Second, and I drove around just to make sure I wasn't just blowing smoke today, there are also no, no, no crosswalks painted to cross Carroll Avenue from one side to the other, from Lincoln, and I just did Carroll. I didn't even go down to Maple. Maple's got a little bit more crosswalks, but Lincoln up to Grant, except from Carroll to B.Y. Morrison, I call it the island hopping, and B.Y. Morrison to the Co-op. Those are the only true crosswalks for any of our citizens to get across that pretty major intersection. I didn't even, I didn't go down Ethan Allen either, and I'm sure there aren't crosswalks down there. I'm not going to swear to that, but I didn't go down there where. There are also no side street crosswalks on any of those streets, except the one at Sherman. That's probably because I spoke with my loud outdoor voice, and there's also one at Lee. The rest of the cross streets, the Two Manor Circles, Boyd, and both sides of Lincoln have no side street crosswalks. Now, I figure that those are, Daryl's here, those are our streets, they don't belong to the county, so we could take care of that pretty fast. It means if someone gets hit by a car trying to cross the street, they have not a leg to stand on, and that's a pun intended, there's no legality there, it's a serious issue. So, I'm asking us, you all, and I don't know if this is public record or not, if I have to make it public record, I'll stay for citizens' comments and speak again, but for you all to take a look, especially at the crosswalks, and then hugely with the State Highway Administration, so we can make some changes. I truly, in my heart of hearts, believe that with any kind of light sequencing at that intersection, we will solve most of the traffic problems. I just, you know, it's just my head thinks that'll work. And finally, I thank you all for the work that you do for the city, and I really appreciate, I appreciate these kinds of nights and my ability to come as a citizen and speak to you. Thank you.
Sure. And maybe, Daryl, if I could just ask you for a minute, if there's anything that you can share about what crosswalks we can do, or if you wanted to characterize discussions with the state about Carroll Avenue, I know I've been part of those, but if there's something you want to say.
Yeah, over the past probably three or four years, we've made numerous formal requests to State Highway for crosswalks along Carroll Avenue. Park and Carroll, Lincoln and Carroll are the two that most frequently come to mind, and we've had state legislators involved as well, reinforcing our requests. With each of those requests, what we get back from State Highway is it does not meet their conditions for crosswalks, so they will not put crosswalks across Carroll Avenue in the locations other than the ones that are already existing. There is one crosswalk on Ethan Allen at Elm that State Highway put in. I think on Carroll Avenue, the only ones I'm thinking of at this point are near the Old Tacoma, around the, not the junction area, but the other place. So, it's not been for, without asking. We run into the limitations of the state standards relative to pedestrian activities, speeds of traffic, and things like that. It's been an insurmountable hurdle at this point. We've also requested, in addition to crosswalks, we made the request for signalized pedestrian crosswalks, where, you know, you could hit the button and a flashing light either above the surface or in the surface gets added, and that has also been rejected by the state. I think in my tenure, there's probably been three times where we formally requested State Highway to reevaluate each of those intersections. So, we don't have a lot of, I don't have any other suggestions to offer on that account. On the city streets, we certainly can add crosswalks. The only standards that the city has relative to crosswalks is we want to make sure there's a crosswalk, I mean, there's a sidewalk on either side that the crosswalk's going to. We don't like to put crosswalks in areas where there isn't a sidewalk on the adjacent curb, so as long as there's connecting sidewalk, we can add crosswalks to the street. And I've noted the ones that you mentioned, and we can certainly, we're doing a big painting now this time of year, so you'll notice a lot of painting going on citywide.
How about the light at the junction, Daryl? Tell us the story.
Well, there's two, and I'm a little confused by, not confused, but there is sort of two animals of lights out there. There are the traffic lights, and there are the pedestrian signals. And so, I am familiar with the pedestrian signals being of an older technology, and the issue being that Montgomery County won't absorb them into their system until they're upgraded. I don't know if the traffic lights is the same situation, or if I've gotten them reversed. So, we are in a situation where, in our area, we are the, those are the only lights maintained by State Highway, and it's done out of an office in Baltimore. We have fairly good relationships with the crosswalk people, the pedestrian signal people. When we call, we do get response for timing issues. It's, again, I can provide the information about their timing schedule, they have put a lot of science and thought into the timing schedule for the pedestrian signals, so there is a rhyme and reason to what is done there. There are times where if the wrong technician comes out, they set them for the wrong times, there's very specific times for those Tacoma Junction pedestrian signals. And usually what we find is people let us know real quickly if they've been set wrongly, and then we call the state again, and they come back out and reset them.
You know, the 12-second pause that Katie refers to is, as far as I can tell, is to allow traffic to clear the intersection when it's coming, when it's going away from the firehouse toward New Hampshire Avenue, because it's a big section, but in all the years I've been watching there, I've never seen more than one car need to clear, and 12 seconds is far too long for the one car. So, it's the shadow pedestrian crossing, as you alluded to, Katie. If you know the intersection well enough, you can use that 12 seconds to get across, even though the, but it's not right, because if you get it wrong, and some other light has turned green, and, you know.
Haven't gotten yet.
Haven't gotten yet, thank goodness.
We can certainly revisit this with State Highway and talk with their technicians again.
So, the lighting, the lighting, the sequence of lighting is a State Highway issue, and the upgrade of those lights is also a State Highway issue.
They currently own those.
They own and program the lights. And does anyone know where those lights sit on their replacement schedule, or if they feel that they're antiquated, or if they...
I could probably adjust that. They know they're antiquated, they need very expensive upgrades to make them consistent with the current technology, and I don't think it's anywhere on their list. They were able to do recently the ones on New Hampshire Avenue, because they had stimulus funds for those, but at this point, it's somewhere really down far, because it's very expensive.
Are they so antiquated that they can't be programmed properly?
Yes, they cannot, I mean, we can do what we've done with the pedestrian crossings, I mean, I think they've done as much as they can with that, but anything else, I don't think there's, at this point, you know, they have tweaked them, they've come out multiple times to try to adjust them. I think they feel that it's...
They've done the right, as far as they can tell, they've done it...
I don't think they feel that it's good, but they feel that they have it as best as they can get it.
As a technical-type person, I continue to be amazed at this, because if it's just a timing issue, what would be the advantage of a new technology, different timers that you could set, you know?
I can't adjust it, I'd have to find out some information.
I know, I know, it's just crazy, it's crazy-making, it's crazy-making that these lights can't be adjusted. And, you know, when they were put in, somebody must have been thinking this is a five-way intersection, I know it's complicated.
Well, there weren't all of the lights at the time when they were first put in.
I'm on Subcommittee C, which is dealing, on the task force, which is dealing with the light issue, and Susie, I'd like to know who you're talking to, because really, who we're going after is the guy in Ward in District III, who is the Assistant Deputy Engineer, Cedric Ward, who we're pulling in to work with us. And what we learned, there's timing and phasing of traffic lights, and the timing is done by the county, and the phasing is done by the state, typically. However, we learned just recently that at the junction, the state seems to do both. It's like one of the few intersections that it really does both, which simplifies things in terms of coordination quite a bit. So, actually, we're very happy to hear that, because there's less hullabaloo in terms of getting the county and the state together. In terms of the equipment not working, we haven't had those kinds of conversations with them yet, S.H.A. They haven't brought that up to us, and we haven't heard that. They're evaluating things, we gave them a list of the problems, and we're going to bring him in to talk with us. So, I'm just going to say, we agree, I agree with Kay, it's a total mess in terms of how the signals work, and we could certainly make it better, and hey, you know, there's always a way to get people to work together better. So, if somebody says no, then you find the person who says yes, and that's what we're going to do.
I totally agree, Lorraine, it's that technical part. Are the lights incapable of being tweaked in a way that they can maximize the throughput in that area?
I haven't heard that yet, you know, I haven't heard that out of the mouths of S.H.A., so until we do...
But if S.H.A. said, "We've hit the limit of the technical capacity of this lighting system," but we still won't replace it, then that's one thing, but if they're not saying that...
We haven't heard that yet.
Then it's an hour of looking closely at the intersections and trying a few more things, right?
Right, right, and we think, you know, there's some creative ways, there could be some lights, maybe blinkers, or, but nobody has said yet that the equipment is not fixable. Now, Susie, if there's a person we should be talking to, you let me know who that is, okay? But I just wanted you to know, we're working on it, and Kay's right, it's a mess there.
Okay, thanks. I think we've, no, no, we've beat those lights. On this topic?
It's a related topic?
Yeah.
Just a related topic. One of the fallouts from the cars having to wait so long at the light when they see that 13-second, you know, black hole there, is that when the light turns green in the morning, I've noticed this because I walk along Carroll Avenue to the metro in the morning, every morning, is that cars are going from the junction all the way into Tacoma at 50 to 60 miles an hour. And so, I would love to request, I know you've located two other areas to have, you know, speed traps in, or, you know, you're going 80 miles an hour versus 25, but this has been a problem for years. It is a fantastic speedway, and cars speed in the morning unbelievable, they can't do it in the afternoon because it backs up too much.
From the junction to Old Town.
From the junction into Old Town. And the people are going really fast, and in the evening, so that is a related issue, and it would be nice to have that monitored, or have one of those things that's saying, "You're going really fast."
Thank you.
At some of the outreach meetings that we've had about the junction, some of the suggestions, and now the chief is here, is to put a speed camera, or run the red light camera, as long as that money, this is me speaking, as long as those monies go back into the city of Tacoma Park and not to the state, I would be greatly in favor of that, because evidently, every morning, there are red light runners and speeders that go through, always during rush hour. That's why the people are talking about the crosswalk between TJ's, Old TJ's, and the Liberty Station, because if you try to cross there, somebody is busting through a red light and can hit you. And that's why they want to crosswalk, so if they get hit there, they have a legal leg to stand on. But a speed camera in there, if we can get another one, would probably, or a red light running camera, would probably earn us enough money to pay the state to put the new lights up. Bye!
And I think the city manager has some information.
No, it's not a question. The police chief just informed me, if anyone drives a black Volkswagen Jetta with Maryland tags JEG143, the vehicle apparently may not have been totally in park, and it has drifted, and it's in the middle of the parking lot.
Oops.
You were hoping that was my car, right?
I had the question earlier today about the van on Carroll Avenue, did you find out, is that, Chief, is that van that's on Carroll Avenue, is that, it's a speed camera survey van, seeing whether the numbers are sufficient to warrant putting a speed camera on Carroll Avenue? So, for anybody who's wondered why that van has been there for about five days, that's what it is. It's Carroll Avenue, the 7400 block, between Lincoln and Boyd.
Is that in lieu of the 410 camera?
It's on the straightaway, though.
It's on the straightaway.
It's on the straightaway, yeah. But it's not, I mean, it's the straightaway down towards, you know, University of North Carolina.
If anybody else from Ward III would like to make a comment.
Good evening, my name's Nadine Black, and I'm here with my daughter Margot Black. And we are here for a couple of reasons, we're Ward III, but we also work with the Young Activist Club, and we are very happy that the city council's been so supportive of the Young Activist Club's work, and in particular, Colleen's been coming out regularly to attend the Young Activist Club and help out. She's wearing green today, in honor of the Young Activist Club, that's good. So, we wanted to just ask for a couple of things. One is that I also served on the task force on the environment, as you know, and the Young Activist Club, as well as myself in that capacity, would like to encourage you to put money into the environmental programs that were supported and recommended by the task force. And in particular, I'm interested in initiatives that address climate change, sustainability issues, and my number one thing is that there is someone in a position of a sustainability coordinator, and I know that that's been brought up by a lot of you beforehand, but I want to just put another plug in for that. I'm sure that there are creative ways to raise the money, or find the money in the budget, and I know that it will pay for itself over time. So, that's one thing. And as a representative of the Young Activist Club, we also talked a lot about how the future really belongs to the kids in this community, and if we, one of the things that we've said in our club is that talk doesn't cook rice, right, and talk is cheap, and so we'd like to actually see some money go towards environmental programs in the future, if not for us older folks, at least for the next generations that come along, so we can think about it that way. And it will pay for itself in the future by just simply providing a healthier and greener place to live, and reducing the environmental impacts and the health impacts of the other things that we're dealing with. And then the next thing...
Love it, love it, love it.
The one small thing we would like, we really are happy that the city council voted to put a ban on using city funds for the purchase of polystyrene food service ware, by request of the Young Activist Club, in honor of their whole campaign, which is continuing on many fronts. And we are now launching Part B, if you will, to get the state and the county to do the same thing with state and county funds. And we are aware that the city council can put a request into the state, and I guess the county, too, to follow suit. So, we're... So we're going to pursue it as best we can. We ask you at the Young Activist Club to actually put a request into the state that they do an ordinance or a regulation or whatever they, what you have to call it at the state level to ban use of state and county funds for polystyrene food service purchasing. And by the way, if they realize that they can do it simply, you know, for county or state functions, they can then use paper or recyclable or reusable. If they have to do a little more pilot programming to figure out how to get the polystyrene out of the school systems, we know a fully funded pilot program ready to go at Piney Branch Elementary School. So you could have put that right in there. It'll save them five grand right off the bat. And we offer that as an incentive from the Young Activist Club. Do you want to add anything? No. Okay. Thank you very much for having...
Can I ask a question? Don't the Young Activists want to do a program with Tacoma Black businesses also? Do you want to say something about that?
I don't know, we're having a bit of shyness, but I'll tell you that one of the programs we're doing is working with the, and I think we've talked about this with the city previously. We're going to go uptown into Old Town Tacoma and ask businesses to sign on a pledge not to use polystyrene in their food service ware. And the Young Activists are designing a sticker and a bookmark with information about health effects and the reasons why this is such a good idea. And we have research happening right now to gather all the information and talk to Old Town Business Association and the Main Street folks. And that, all the specific outreach should happen in a couple of weeks. Great?
Sounds great.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anybody else from Ward Three?
Good evening. I'm Noah Mattson. I live on Lincoln Avenue, a couple doors up from the mayor in Ward Three. And I'm here to endorse the call for more funding for the environment. So, you know, if you ask anybody in the greater Washington region about what they think about Tacoma Park, I think they'll say, "We're that granola crunchy, nuclear-free artsy zone that's green." And unfortunately, I think the latest budget is, I think we're not going to keep up those credentials. And so I'd like to see a lot more funding for the environment. In fact, our buttons here say 1% for the environment. It's nice and catchy. 1% for the environment. 1% for the environment. All right. And I'm not going to be long, even though I apparently have the floor for as long as I like. But when I told my daughters, plural, that...
There's nothing hiding over there.
...that I was going to, coming here to talk about tonight, they wanted to talk too. And with no prodding on their own, they came up with some other ideas as well as this, this light. I'm not sure how Rachel's going to reach this.
There's a button right, right in front of her. If you push it, it'll go down. See?
Oh, the whole thing?
Yep, unless it's already all the way down there.
Can you even see her?
The camera can see her.
Go ahead. She wrote out her speech. Go ahead. Great. So Rachel had some recommendations on saving paper for the city. All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. Just one second. I certainly hope that we do and are able to put a speed camera up at the junction or wherever. Maybe it's just me, but I've noticed in the past year, two years, three years, and people always have been aggressive, but the last six months, I've noticed people becoming much more aggressive. Even on Maple Avenue during school hours in the morning, and that's when I drive to work. I go down Sherman Avenue, make a right, and I drive a four-by-four pickup truck. Everybody knows that. I've been bumped going down Sherman Avenue because I'm going too slow. I've seen people have driven around me when I stop at a stop sign. Now, understand, I've also seen our police on the street giving tickets more than ever. And I want to certainly thank the chief and the police, fellow police officers. And I was on the Public Safety Committee for 10 years pushing this. And I've always said, "You want to race, race on the track, not on the street." And I'm somebody that believes in racing on the track. I don't believe in, my sister will tell you, I drive like a little old lady, and she's right, or a little old man, she's right. Because I'm worried about what is going on in front of me and behind me. But I don't believe, I believe in going slow on the street. A friend of mine, but for what is her, the friend of mine's building a car and he's asked me to drive it on the drag strip. We'll see. I may be, at 60, I may be a little too old to be able to race again. We'll find out. But speed cameras are fantastic and encouraged, at least up in the junction. Because you're right, people are going 40, 50 miles an hour. And I'm somebody that's gone over 100 on a track. So, thank you. So I certainly encourage that. And also, if, like me, if you see somebody passing you at a stop sign or doing whatever, you can call our dispatcher and they've been really good if you can get the person's license plate. Sometimes that's harder than to do. But I encourage a little more vigilance by maybe the citizens in turning in people's license plates who are, especially on Maple, who are during school time. And I know that the crossing guards, I've talked with them, they're keeping an eye on it too. But maybe it's just me. Maybe people aren't getting any more aggressive. I don't know. But I think they are. So, thank you.
I'll just mention that when people see a particular area that's a problem for speeding at a particular time, like has been mentioned here in terms of cars coming through the junction and heading for Old Town in the morning, it's very helpful if you let the police chief know, if you let me know, if you let your council member know, and we can make sure that the police are aware of those areas so that they can have special enforcement on those. And so if you've got a particular block and a time of day that is a recurring problem, if you let us know, they will enforce there and return. If you, if you get the city, the weekly update, there's always a list at the bottom there of all of the various traffic enforcement areas of the previous week. And so you can see where the police have been and what they've been doing there. And if you think you've got an area that needs to be added to that list, Melissa. Anybody else? Another daughter.
She built up some courage herself. Here she is. This is Serena.
Hi, Serena.
Well, I'm also here to, I think we should think about spending more time and money on environmental causes. In Rachel Cresson's Silent Spring, the first chapter, which is the only one that I can really understand, it talks about a town which is very beautiful and peaceful and then turns desolate and forbidding. This is because of humans and, and we should, and every uneco-friendly thing that we do may lead us to the same fate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, I'm Lisa Bodett. I live on Sycamore, 7012. I just have one request. I hosted recently a meeting with the Tacoma Junction Task Force for people on Sycamore at my house. And one of the things that, that was mentioned besides a number, many, many things that we talked about was the little wooded strip that's on Columbia and how it gets completely overgrown with poison ivy, which comes out into the sidewalk area in the summertime. And I believe there's, isn't there an ordinance about not having rampant poison ivy around? So anyways, it would be great if that could get cleaned up. I don't know whether we could get a Boy Scout troop to come and, you know, clear up that area. Really, there's not a whole lot that would have to be done to put a couple of paths in there and just make it like a little, a little park, park-like area, you know, maybe a bench or two, something like that. That's just an idea.
And you're referring to the, to the wooded hillside behind the city lot down from the Co-op?
Yeah, yeah. The one that's behind the Co-op and the, the city lot, exactly.
Right.
And then my other comment was just sort of a question, I guess, maybe for the police chief, whether there's anything known about the recent tagging of Sycamore and Spring Park, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I took photos all the way down the other day and it was a mess.
We've identified two suspects. We're obtaining warrants for their arrest today. Good. Thank you. Public Works Director has...
I appreciate your comment, Ms. Bodett. The city arborist has also been keenly aware of that spot of land. And starting last year, we started an invasives removal project. So you may notice when you drive by there, it looks very different than it has in the past. We've had two different sessions of invasives removal, one manually and one with chemicals. There also are Eagle Scouts that regularly volunteer and work in that project. So it is something that has, has been worked on. It'll take several years to stamp out the invasives and start a replanting program for native species, but it is something that we're working on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Anybody else from Ward Three want to speak? Okay. Thank you all very much and we'll move along from here. The next thing on the agenda is the public hearing on the city budget. And this is on the city manager's proposed FY12 budget. And we have a sign-up list of people who have signed up to speak on this.
Do the previous comments carry over?
Yes.
Do they have to be repeated?
Nope. They, they carry over. Our award-winning city clerk got those government. So we will now open the public hearing and ask people who are commenting to please keep your comments to three minutes. And I'll start with the sign-up list and then we'll take anybody else who hasn't signed up to speak. First is Barry Howard, followed by Bob Bingaman and Tim Mail. Barry Howard here? Well, all right. If he comes back in, we'll catch him at the end. Bob Bingaman.
Thank you for your time tonight. What inspired me to come down and take up a little bit of your time this evening? A number of my neighbors and I in Hodges Heights, I live on Holly Avenue, right across from the elementary school, met with our council member on Saturday. And I guess the main message I wanted to deliver, I really got inspired at that meeting to come down and say, "I know how tough financial times are. I know when you're trying to close a budget, you're thinking about that one-year segment." And one of the reasons I live in Tacoma Park is because of the environment. And what a great community this is. And that's part of being a great community is the great environment. So I guess I would urge you all not to think about this as just one-year budget, but think about what kind of investments we can make this year to make this even a better environment to raise families in. And somebody already spoke to it, but the idea that I just kept thinking about after that meeting is the sustainability coordinator or director seems to me, I know times are tough, but that is an investment in the city that I think we would get money back on through environmental savings, making our city more efficient, making our fleet of vehicles more efficient. I think if we brought somebody in who thought about that every day as part of their job, we would see returns to the city. I also wanted to just say briefly, in these days where it's so chic to attack faceless bureaucrats in the government, my neighborhood really appreciates Mike Welsh and the city gardener. The park right across from my house, right adjacent to the school, for years was in decline. Combination of literally, we'd see people going in and digging up and trying to steal azalea bushes out of the park. The high traffic of kids before the renovation that was done over there. It was really a, it's supposed to be a garden and it was really in decline. And a number of our neighbors came together and said, you know, kind of enough is enough. And we started doing some planning. We started having conversations with Mike. And he has really done a great job at trying to bring that garden back. And we still have a lot of work to do. It's not all on Mike. Again, myself, my wife, a number of our neighbors have gone down to plant and clean up. Walk through that and just see if you haven't walked through it in a while, how, how good it looks. So I just wanted to take my hat off to him and wish you all the best of luck in your deliberations.
Thank you. And I'll just point out for folks who haven't experienced it that the, I am using the timer on the hearing and it'll give you a single beep when you've got 30 seconds left and you can see the time and the lights at the podium there.
Thank you. My name is Tim Mail and I think I've seen many of you before. I've served before on the Safe Roadways Committee, twice on the, on the Environmental Committee and most recently on the Task Force for Environmental Action. And I'm here tonight as well to talk about sustainability. You know, in particular, the city's estimated budget for 2012 is 24 and a half million dollars. And you're supporting an estimated 147 FTEs positions in the city. And I really appreciate all the time you spent in the last six months talking about, with citizens, talking about among the council members, the report that we put together in the task force. But I was disappointed to not see more of those recommendations in the draft budget that we have out. And I know that a number of council members had spoken earlier about the particular pieces of it that they supported. Council members had talked about dedicating 1% for the environment. We heard about that earlier today. And I think there's, there's just a few more things you could do. And I would note in particular that, for example, in the budget, it talks about how the traffic camera revenue, that there is, I think the budget states the city expects to have a significant surplus in this fund unless additional expenses are allocated to it. Now, I know that money can only be used for public safety, but you have other public safety expenses that aren't currently allotted to that account. So maybe there's ways to switch money around within the budget for maybe even just single-year initiatives that could address the environment. And then I wanted to add that in particular for me is the initiatives, the actions that we talked about that were most important, the actions that in fact were talked about 10 years ago in the local action plan on climate change are the ones around climate change, around carbon footprint of the city. The audit that was done for that last report and before showed the city having a 350,000-ton carbon footprint. That's not including pass-through traffic. And we haven't updated that, that estimate. Although we've signed the mayor's conference, what is it? The Conference of Mayor's Climate Action Commitment that said we were going to get to a 7% reduction from 1990 levels. And so I think there's a lot we need to do, there's a lot that we identified in our, in our task force report that talked about the sorts of significant citywide actions that could reduce our carbon footprint. The sustainability coordinator, an expert who could help with efficiency upgrades, with renewable energy installations, with the solar co-op that citizens in the, in the community are trying to do by themselves, that's one big piece of it. Another is trying to, you know, coordinate the city's program or new city programs with county and state programs to try to help more of the city get, to reduce their footprint. So I just want to emphasize that and say, "I really hope you can find ways to do a little bit more as you move from the draft budget to the final budget." And I, again, really appreciate the time you spent talking about this in the last six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Sherwood, Bruce Sidwell, Brian Kelly?
Good evening. I'm Wayne Sherwood. I live at 218 Grant, just two houses up. Thank you for letting us talk about the budget tonight. I have very short remarks. First, I really think you've done a terrific job on the proposed budget. I was a part of some of the pretests of what was called the Budget Game earlier on. It was kind of an unofficial test. And they were telling us we had a million-dollar shortfall either to raise taxes or to cut the city budget. And it was very... And it was very scary. And people were talking about closing the library or shutting down the Recreation Department. And, and this budget doesn't do that. It maintains the staffing levels and no proposed increase in the local property tax. And I don't know how our officials worked those miracles, but however you did it, all of you working together and the available funds, I just think that's very admirable. And I was, I was especially concerned about the Recreation Department and the library because I just see that on a daily basis, I see those facilities used so much. Second, I support the proposed environmental initiatives in the budget. I hope we can do more than that in the future, like a sustainability coordinator and other environmental programs, just seconding what other people have said. And third, and finally, I do have a major concern still. As you know, we began planning the community center over a decade ago, and one of our key goals was that the community center would be a place that would bring together people from all sections of our community, and especially that we would have programming that would be of interest to, accessible to, and affordable, especially for adults and youth who are low-income or minority residents of our community. I still think that we're falling short in those areas, and I don't see very much in the proposed city budget that is specifically identified as providing needed programs and services for those groups. I admit that I haven't looked recently at the Recreation Department's program cattle dog, but I admire the Recreation Department a lot and what they're doing. And I know they've been really beefing up programs in several areas and getting more people signed up on like 500 people in the, in the basketball program and programs for the seniors. But, you know, I think this is not something new. It's something that we've been working on in this community for 10 years. It was the original impetus that we'd be able to bring together the various parts of the community. So I think it's something that, it's to fulfill the community center and to do what we've always wanted to do and maintain that goal. Anything that you can do to add to the budget or to either the Recreation Department or other parts of the city to, you know, programs for healthcare, for food and nutrition, for jobs for teens, and a job bank for teens and a teen council, I'd encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Sidwell, Byrne Kelly, Satyavon.
I'm Bruce Sidwell, I live at 7209 Spruce Avenue. And I wanted to thank the council for their hard work on this budget, especially to Barbara Matthews for all her, her work and her staff's work on this. I think it's an exceptionally nice piece. I'm always really proud of what Tacoma Park does. I've lived in Tacoma Park since about 1955, so there were a couple of kids who were up here earlier, and they were making this claim that Tacoma Park was really for them. And I just wanted to let you know that some kids actually hang around. I was an attractive kid here once, too, so. Hard to believe, maybe. I wanted to say a few things about the environmental initiative. I encourage, you know, more work on that. But before I do that, I just wanted to, to make sure that you had all heard about the fact that Tacoma Park has now been recognized by the National Wildlife Federation as being a community wildlife habitat. And what that actually means is that we've got enough trees, enough habitat, enough shrubs, enough water, enough interest in doing good gardening in the area that in fact we've been recognized by the National Wildlife Federation as the 50th community, as well as the very first in, in Maryland. Congratulations to us all, everybody who worked on that, including Daryl and Todd and, and Mike.
And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Now, as far as the, I wanted to thank the fact that, point out the fact that I am much appreciative that in the budget itself, there are some excellent recommendations for storm water control. This is something that, I've been active in the Friends of Sligo Creek for many years, and we're quite aware of, of the impact that, that storm water control has on our creek, as well as downstream, Northwest Branch, Anacostia, the Potomac, et cetera. So I'm appreciative that we're having initiative in that direction. I'm hopeful that, as, as Tim mentioned earlier, that maybe we can try and find a way to, to find monies from many more speed cameras, whatever it takes, to, to do a little bit more in terms of things that are not already funded by the, by our stormwater fees. And these would be things like the, the more efficient streetlights, the cooperative solar possibilities on business roads, and improved recycling, and, and the carbon audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Byrne Kelly, Satyavon, and Catherine Tunes.
I'm grateful for anybody that crunches numbers and tries to make it work. God bless you all. I'm concerned about that we're not green enough, which we've heard some comments, Collins handed out a handout that is of interest. I support having a sustainability coordinator. I actually believe that somebody such as myself or Saty even and a few others in this room would, would take it on a voluntary basis if they were given a cut of what they could save the city, because there's a lot of money there. There's a whole lot of money there. I don't know what we're waiting for, because it'll pay for itself. And we could even probably get 1% of the whole budget reduced, so it would pay for the coordinator and a savings to the budget. So, you know, we gotta take, we gotta take that leap and get serious about sustainability. I know Daryl does a great job. I know everybody in the city cares. We do have solar on this building. We, we have made this space, we're in environmentally improved. We, we are doing things. But there's more than we can do. For instance, I applied, and I, I'm amazed I didn't notice, I applied for the, a Rainscapes grant, takes out some of my driveway. But we're not in the Rainscapes program. And it's a well-funded program, and I'm getting work all over the county, building rain gardens, because I'm a landscape architect. And I couldn't do it, get the benefit in my own, because we're off the grid in terms of our stormwater management. We're independent. And so we don't get that money from the county, and that's a very viable environmental thing to be doing for clean water, for the Anacostia watershed, which Sligo Creek is a part of. So if we can get into that program, I don't know how we got out, but that's, you know, there's money under the Chesapeake Bay initiatives in this area that we could tap into. And that's other people's money, that's federal money. Okay? And then also the cooperation between the states and the Chesapeake Bay. So that's an area where we could definitely improve in. And then another pet peeve of mine is that we take away the leaves. People have been conditioned, I guess it's the British heritage, to, to clean up and be tidy and remove everything nature is giving us, natural mulch. Bring it out to the curb, pick it up, take to the city, grind it up, and then buy it back. Oh my God, it's sad. Okay? Now, we could have community composts. We have a lot of paper streets, we have a lot of places. I've established one in my neighborhood, there's about seven people that use my compost area. And we share the city compost when it comes back in. And I beg people, don't put it out for the city, put it on my compost, I'll turn it. We could do better. We could just have a backhoe, drive around every now and then and turn the thing periodically. And we don't have to take everything to a central location and then redistribute it. I understand the vital areas to keep stormwater drains clear and things like that of leaf deposition, but we have to educate our citizens that that's nature's compost. It keeps moisture in the soil, and it keeps organic matter rejuvenating the soil, instead of having an urban desert, which is what we have caused. So we need to change the way we handle our leaves. Thank you.
Thank you. Satyavon and Catherine Tunes.
I'm Satyivani Clay Colsa, 6719 Conway Avenue. I served on the Task Force on Environmental Action. And I'm here to talk about things that I like in the city and things that I would like in the city. I like that our town has a history of green efforts. I would like us to rekindle those, that energy for current and future years. I like that our city has a progressive tree protection law that does great many things, but I'd like a more aggressive tree planting program and maintenance, even considering on private property. I like that our city has 50-plus police officers that help give us better service than we otherwise get from the county. I like that our Public Works Department of 30-plus staff helps us maintain our trash and our waste and our gardens and yards and also the trees. I like that we have our own library that gives excellent service at a staff of about 15 people. What I would like is to have one full-time director of sustainability for the environment. We have, and I like that we have a dedicated stormwater fund that gives us the capacity to pay three-quarters time for an engineer that does very progressive stormwater retrofit projects that save us money and protect the environment. So I would like one, just one, full-time director of sustainability that can help us do a great many other things that also save money and protect the environment. In the interest of compromise, I'll offer one solution, that if we cannot find the commitment to fund a full-time staff person in the present year, that we take funds equivalent to any of the new unallocated speed camera money that Tim mentioned, and move that money around for public use, sorry, for public safety use, and reallocate the other money remaining to fund short-term project consultants that can help us start implementing the projects recommended by the Environmental Action Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Tunes.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunes. I, first of all, want to thank each of you for what I know is going to be grueling sessions twice a week, looking at all of the budget issues and trying to make that balance. I know it's a difficult thing, I don't envy you that task, but I appreciate that you do it. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is not just about money, budget is not just about money, it is about asset protection and asset allocation. And one of the best assets we have in this city is the mature oaks and other native trees that we have. I don't think that people understand the benefits that are accruing to our citizens day after day, year after year, from those trees. And it's really, really important to protect them. I was disappointed during the Budget Game to see that one of the options offered up was to get rid of the arborist. I was disappointed also to read the citizen comments. And I think that part of that could be because he's taken a strong enforcement stance. I think we could do better in terms of explaining to people the benefits of the trees, and how it's important to protect them, and how they can protect them. Because I think, from what you've heard tonight, people will make that little bit of investment in that, in that asset if we ask them to and explain to them how to do that. The other thing that is an asset that I think we really need to protect is the soil that the trees grow in. Byrne talked about, you know, renewing the soil with the leaves. The other thing is just making sure that it is there and it is not covered with concrete. So I would beg you, please, to not put anything in the budget that would add to paved surfaces in the city. The other topic, I agree with everyone here who has talked about the sustainability coordinator. This is something that was recommended years and years ago. I believe it may have, have been recommended by the Committee on the Environment back in the 1990s, if people can remember the last century. And yet, we have not done that. I think we can do that. I think it would have paid so many dividends over the years, and it will continue to. I know I spent two full weeks, night and day, trying to write a grant a little over a year ago, that would have brought a million dollars to the city. If we had a staff person who could have pulled that information together, that certainly would have paid for itself more than 10 times over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify at the public hearing on the budget? And while you're coming up, a reminder that this is the first public hearing on the budget. There will be a second public hearing on the budget in a couple of weeks.
I'll have to come back for the second one, too.
It's great that so many people are here for this public hearing on the budget, so keep it up, keep it up.
Mayor, Councilmember Joe Edgell, 1001 Elm Avenue. And Councilmember Clays Ward, as you know, I was one of the co-chairs of the Task Force on Environmental Action. Appreciate the work that you've done. I know you've spent countless hours in discussions with us, going over piece by piece each of those. I am a little disappointed not to see more of the recommendations, and particularly the high-priority recommendations implemented. I want to thank the city manager, Ms. Matthews, for noting in her introductory document, specifically in environmental section, I think that's a big help and helps delineate some of the things. What I might request the city do, however, is have a specific section of its budget devoted to environmental initiatives. There is no such thing now, there's just the introductory document. So it's hard for those of us who are concerned about all of the city issues, but in particular the environmental issues, to really identify how much money the city is or is not spending. And I think as the people who've come before me have said, an environmental coordinator would help for that. The money's there. The speed camera money can be devoted to other public safety activities, and those public safety monies that you're funding some of the police with could be moved over to fund the environmental coordinator. It's a matter of making hard choices. And I know change is very hard, we all know that, right? The status quo is very easy. Making some of these choices is going to be difficult, and it might mean that certain other functions the city performs don't happen. But if you want to regain that mantle of an environmental city, we need to do more. Keep in mind also that we recommended in the TFEA a couple of items that will raise revenue. And from what I can see and from discussions I've had with city staff and with council members, there hasn't been much motion toward the goal of those revenue-raising activities. In particular, the rewards for recycling program that we recommended, although there would be an initial capital outlay of providing cans to residents, would raise funds, would help pay for the Public Works Department. And it's an area where you don't have revenue now, because everybody gets to throw away as much trash as they want, and it's free. So I ask you to redouble your efforts, to make a commitment to the environment that you don't have currently, and to pay for that environmental and sustainability coordinator. That person will help you focus your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the back?
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue. Your official peace delegate. I just want to remind you people that when you use the money on the budget, whenever you set money aside to spend it on anything, just remember it's not your money you're spending. It's coming from the money in the mouths of people who are having a hard time with this economy to make ends meet. There are several, several dozens of people out there in Tacoma Park, I'm sure there are hundreds, that are wondering where their next meal is coming from. They're trying hard to keep a roof over their head to have a place to sleep tonight. And I'm hoping we can keep our taxes down this year. And I'm hoping to God we can set some money aside to help the needy, the ones who cannot, cannot make it this year, ones who cannot make ends meet. So please, remember when you spend this money, try to go the most cost-effective way you can. And if we, then think, do we really need this issue, or do we, or just that we want this issue? I mean, if we're going to build a nice new stadium somewhere, then I don't think we need it. If we're going to build a, you know, say sidewalk or something so people don't trip, and it's wheelchair accessible, yes, we need it. But we should really look at cost-effectiveness, is that we're going to spend $10,000 on a, on a five-foot section of sidewalk, if we can only get away there spending less than $1,000 for it? I think we should really be careful in our biddings. Because remember, that money is coming from the mouths of people who are wondering where their next meal is coming from, and where their next place they're going to sleep is, where they're going to, if they're going to feed their kids or house their kids. Remember that. There's a lot of people going homeless nowadays, and there's a lot of people losing their jobs. So remember that, whenever you use the money and spend the money, that's not your money you're spending. It belongs to a lot of people, including people who cannot make ends meet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Barbara Mielbacher, 1001 Elm Avenue. Before I forget, I'd like to mention the movie Bag It, which will be played here at 7:00 on April 28th. It's a film about all the plastics in our lives. It's free, and it will be here at 7:00, April 28th. I also would like to plug the environmental or the sustainability coordinator. I think for Tacoma Park to be at the forefront of being environmentally sustainable, it needs to be doing more than what it's doing now. It's a good start, but not enough. And I do agree with other opinions about the sustainability coordinator. Funds should be able to be allocated for a position by redirecting the money from the speed camera for the safe, public safety issues, and then redirecting the budget, some of the budget for a sustainability coordinator. I am quite concerned about the, the. I am quite concerned about the tree cover in Tacoma Park as well. I've seen many trees in my neighborhood being cut down because they're old and dying, but only very, very few being planted again. And I think there should be a bigger initiative in people being able to plant trees on their properties with less money. I know there is some subsidies available for that, but it doesn't look like enough incentive is being given to people to plant voluntarily if it's not possible to make somebody plant another tree for a dying tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Rooker, 804 Larch Avenue, Ward Two. Right before I got here, Colleen, my representative, handed me her own list of sustainability actions from the task force plan that she is favoring, and I approve of all of these. And I'm happy to see the Rewards for Recycling on here and the Sustainability Coordinator. You know, if you talk to investors, and this is a budget issue, so I suppose it's appropriate to talk about money matters, financial matters, if you ask them about investment advice, they will always tell you, it takes green to make green. It takes this to green this city. And if there's one lesson we've learned from Gaithersburg when they were presenting here and other places, a Sustainability Coordinator is a linchpin, and I think you get a good return on your investment from such a person. Same with the Rewards for Recycling. I think we'll get money back. And I can't think of a bigger public safety issue, and that's tough because there's a lot of them, than the air we breathe, the future for our children, the quality of life at a very basic level. What bigger public safety issue can there be? So I too favor using that public safety money for wherever it's appropriate in the environmental Catherine, my neighbor was talking about some of the assets of trees and the soil. I agree with all that. I too have seen the tree canopy disappear. My neighbors really don't understand, I think a lot of them, the value of trees and why everybody's trees is my tree, and my trees are everybody else's trees. And I think more education would be good. I also want to add a third asset to trees and the soil, and that's the children, some of whom testified here tonight. The children and the future, the children are the future, and what kind of future are we leaving them? I just watched a movie called The Age of Stupid. The main question is, the year is 2050, and it's why? Why didn't you do something when you could, when there was still time to turn things around? And the children of the future are asking this of us. So for the children and the future, I hope that you will face some of these tough choices, and I know they are tough, and I thank you for all your good work on the budget. I enjoyed the budget game, too. It's one thing when it's a game, and it's another thing when it's a very real piece of work on your desk. So I hope that we will regain the mantle of an environmental city, and we'll need this green to get that green. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Paul Wapner. I'm in Ward Three, 7107 Sycamore Avenue. And I have to say, it's great to have to stand here and talk to you guys, because I feel like one of the greatest things about Tacoma Park is, I don't feel like I have to lobby you, because I feel like we're basically on the same page. And I know that you guys, if we had infinite amounts of money, and if we had infinite amounts of resources, you'd want to fund all the things we're talking about tonight. I would say that let's go into deficit. Let's spend more than we have to do the right stuff. That I feel like that the study that was done, and I have to say, I haven't been up on the budget, I haven't looked at any of the numbers, but I'm just here to say that it seems like a tremendous effort has gone into thinking about how to advance environmental well-being in the city. The recommendations that I'm familiar with make imminent sense, and I would just hope that, and I don't envy the work you have to do to fix, to sort of design this budget, but I've known Bruce for a long time, and I know Dan, and I know Josh recently, and I know that your hearts are in the right place, and I would just hope that somehow the heart and the mind and the budget pen can get together and fund, I think, these extraordinarily important initiatives that you're hearing tonight.
Anybody else want to testify at the first budget public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring this budget public hearing to a close, and we'll take a short break and then come back for the remainder of our meeting. Agenda scheduling update. If I can just remind folks that the council will meet again Thursday this week for a budget work session, and since there was a previously scheduled program in this room, we will be meeting in the Azalea Room, our favorite old stomping grounds that we thought we were never going to go back to. Then Monday, the 18th, we have a budget work session back in the auditorium. Wednesday, the 20th, though we go from Wednesday night, we have another budget work session. Monday, the 25th, we have our second budget public hearing, and also the constant yield tax rate public hearing. And at that point, we've scheduled on April 25th, a reconciliation discussion on the budget, and that takes us through the end of this month. The next thing is a proclamation for the record, and I just wanted to note, so I can get to it here, that I'm signing a mayor proclamation naming April 18th to 24th as Maryland Veg Week 2011. And this is being supported, as it was last year, by Senator Jamie Raskin and Delegate Tom Hucker. And several Tacoma Park businesses are participating in and supporting Maryland Veg Week, including Middle East Cuisine Market Kitchen and the Organic Falafel Stand. And I'm proclaiming it Maryland Veg Week and encouraging residents to choose vegetarian foods as a way to help protect the planet, their health, and animals, and to explore the wide variety of vegetarian cuisine offered in our community. The next thing is public comment period. If we have anybody left who didn't get to make comments, and it would be on anything that is not on our regular meeting tonight, so we've got a couple ordinances where we'll take comments, but anything else? First, we'll go to Mr. Lovelace in the back, and then we'll go to Catherine.
Yep, my name's Pat Lovelace, again, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your favorite peace delegate. I want to ask you people one question. We're trying to get rid of the invasive plants and stuff like the poison ivy and the litter people are talking about. Why can't we put some of the nonviolent offenders to work? Get them training in our jobs and stuff? Get them doing something useful rather than sitting in a cell somewhere, taking up and wasting our prison space? Why can't we put the nonviolent offenders to use? You can put them on community service and let them pay back their damages, like people who tag buildings, people who create horrible disturbance or something like that, as long as they're not using weapons. And we can put them to community service, they can be taking out the invasive plants, and we can save that money on our budget. We can have volunteers, sometimes even supervising them, probably. But I think that's the answer to some of our nonviolent crimes, is to put them to community service, give them something useful to do, give them something to feel worthwhile about afterwards, because they'll be able to walk or drive by that area and say, I helped clean that place up. I helped make this a decent city finally. And that'd be a way for them to atone for their actions. And another thing, too, is my nurse Benedicta is turning 53 years old on Wednesday, April the 13th is her birthday. She's one of the ones who does the cooking for me. She's done a lot to help me stay healthy and stuff, so I want to ask everybody out there to say a prayer for her and ask everybody to think, you know, that our taxpayers' money are doing good work, they're keeping me healthy, allowing me to live another day. And my nurse Benedicta is having her birthday on April the 13th. She's turning 53. She's 53 years young. That's right. Also, I want to ask you people to keep, I want to thank the people from Ward Three for coming out tonight and the children who spoke up. And I want to encourage the city to see if they can send messages to schools through the Young Activist Club, and see if they can bring more kids out to speak at the ward nights, to see what we can do to help them in their schools, help make their neighborhoods a better place. Maybe they're worried about bullies and fights and drugs in their schools, and they can come out here and speak up, and maybe we can do something to help them. Because like everybody's been saying, our children are our future leaders, they are the ones who we have to look forward to. We don't want them looking down on us, saying 2045, and saying, why didn't you guys do anything to help us? It's too late now. Please, don't wait till it's too late. That's what they're telling us, that's what our future children, 50, 50 years from now, are telling us. Please make this planet better for us to live in. Thank you for letting me share Tacoma Park rules.
Thank you.
All right. Love it, love it, love it.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunas, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Friends of Sligo Creek for becoming the wildlife community. I know they have worked on that for years and years, and it took a lot of dedication to get a certain number of facilities and homeowners all certified wildlife habitats, and so I appreciate that. They also had the Sweep the Creek event this past weekend, and wanted to congratulate them on that and for holding those events regularly. It gets people out into the woods and aware of the need to keep the creeks clean and how nature works, so I appreciate that. I know that someone spoke, Pat actually spoke a little earlier about how many people are hungry. I want to remind the community that this week, Ride on Bus is collecting food for manna, food in Montgomery County. Arbor Day is coming up on Saturday, hopefully that will be mentioned, and I don't get to work at that anymore, but hopefully other people will be doing that. I want to give another plug also for the Sustainability Coordinator. There's an awful lot of work that the city could do, there's an awful lot of organizations that this person could work with, both Montgomery County, Ickley, Ickley, Maryland, the state. There's an awful lot of projects and work going on all over that this person could plug Tacoma Park into. And I would strongly suggest, not that we have a junior staff person stuck in one of the departments, but this person has to be a fairly senior, fairly technical individual who can work directly under the city manager's office and the immediate office, and can not be directed or subject to any of the department Teds, but to work with each one of them. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any public comment? Okay. Next is council comments. Councilmember Clay.
I really enjoyed the art hop this weekend. I did not get to go last year, I can't remember why, I was probably at a Girl Scout camping trip or something, but I had a great time at the art hop this weekend, which surprised me, because I'm not, you know, the usual sort of arts attendee person. But I've been noticing how many more people are out and about downtown, even when it's been raining, when I've been out. And I think the new everyday gourmet, or the reopened everyday gourmet has helped with that. I've been there several times, and it's always, it's always full in the evenings, and so that was really terrific, and I really appreciate all the businesses and folks who participated in that. And one of the things that I saw there, that I don't know if all the other council members have seen or not, but you know how we did the contest for the banners at the entry, I don't know what you call them, the gateway banners, but they're the fruit crate signs? Well, they've made cups out of them. Now, I already bought the cup with the B.Y. Morrison Park mural on it, and so now I have to order the set of all of the wraparounds now of the fruit and vegetable crate designs. So I think that's totally cool.
My favorite is Roscoe Chasing an Egg.
Yeah. You know, my kids like them, too, so I'm just going to get rid of all the other mugs in my house, and I'll have all Tacoma Park mugs, it'll be awesome. Anyway, so that was a lot of fun. And while I was out there, I met up with the people from Art for the People, Alice Sims and Fritzi, whose last name I don't remember, but who frequently has...
Who's moving?
Is she moving? Well, she frequently has art in the Salon Jam front window. Anyway, you know, the mural went up on the side of the library, and then the ESOL students from Piney Branch did the mural piece that's, it's over the doorway that exits out towards Maple nearest to the library, I don't know if you've seen that or not. But there was also another set of panels that was done, and there are six of those panels that were done, and they were done by younger kids. And my Girl Scout troop participated as well in sort of helping manage the kids and put those together. And the Art for the People folks would like to place them at the community center, but there has apparently been some challenges in finding a suitable location to post those in the community center. And so I think that those should be posted, and maybe the council could direct the city manager to work with the Art for the People folks and find a place to post those. We found a place to post the plywood with the Jase Jackson, what's the name of that artist that splashed?
Pollack.
Yeah, our Jackson Pollack style painting, I'm sure we can find a place for these six pounds from the mural project. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I did hand out to the people in the audience tonight this Tacoma Park Environmental Action Plan for our Sustainable Future. It is essentially the same thing that I handed out to all of the council members and emailed out, I think on the 18th of January, when we were asking which of the TFVA pieces we supported. And so I handed that out to folks in the audience today, and I added three things to it, and that is to be successful in implementing these things, that we need to have a funding mechanism, that the mayor will need to schedule, you know, meaningful time for us to talk about these things, which I think will be, have to be more than just sort of piecemeal from agenda item to agenda item, but probably maybe a day, a full day, where we actually can sit and hash out and talk about this, because what we're talking about is a whole new programmatic way of doing business in the city. It requires all kinds of elements, from, you know, the funding pieces to what the programmatic pieces look like, and how that is sustained over the long run, and how it fits together with the activities that we're doing now. So I think that that will probably require a more concentrated amount of time to talk about it, and the other... about it. And the other thing that I put is that it will require sustained interest and input from the public as well, and a lot of public engagement around the issues. And so I hope that we see that. I appreciate everything that the people had to say today, and I'm open to different funding mechanisms to find a way to put these things forth. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ray.
Thanks. Actually, I was looking through my environmental folder before the meeting, and just to lend credence to Councilmember Clay's point, I actually have the original printout from her, so just want to give her credit for her forethought. And those are, many of the ideas there are ideas that I stole and put in what I would call the Green Deal for Tacoma Park. So I have a couple of comments about the budget. I know we're going to talk about this for many weeks, but I find it helpful to lay out some high-level points on this. First is, we have done a lot as a community to be an environmental leader, and we probably don't get all the credit we deserve for it. Yes, it's often cited that we are one of the first communities that recycled, and that we haven't done a lot since then. Well, we have done a lot, just to name some things. We're now a city that buys 100% wind power electricity. Yes, that's done through renewable credits. There aren't any wind turbines right around here, but we've made that commitment. We have solar panels on the roof of this building. We're looking at putting solar panels on the new public works facility. This room is LEED certified. We've bought many hybrid vehicles for our fleet. So we've made progress, but there's much more that we can do. And I think the Task Force for the Environment did an amazing job laying out many recommendations. And I would again propose the Green Deal for Tacoma Park, which is committing one cent from the tax rate, which is about $185,000 in this coming year, towards funding a series of initiatives. Originally, I had 10 items that I listed. Some of them overlapped with the items that Colleen has on her sheet. These 10 items might not be the exact right things, although I think the first one is definitely correct. They're open for discussion, but to me, what it is, is that I think Tacoma Park residents are willing to commit a portion of the property taxes to being greener as a city. When I go around and talk to people, this is an idea that is widely supported across the city. And so those things that I would list, I think I actually have 11 here now, are a Sustainability Coordinator, and that coordinator should report directly to the city manager and be on equal with the other directors in the city. That we have a streetlight purchase working group, and that coordinator could help lead that group, but it would be engaged citizens. Many of the Task Force for the Environment individuals who are on that effort said they were willing to do more, but they didn't want to keep spinning their wheels. But if there was a dedicated thing we wanted them to work on, they were willing to grab the reins and help steer the ship with us. And so, streetlight working group to figure out how to purchase the streetlights, a seasonal ban on leaf blowers, or maybe it's four-stroke engines, as Councilmember Clay proposed, a solar energy co-op, which citizens have already started working on, but could be supercharged with support from a Sustainability Coordinator and some concerted effort from the city. Tree planting, which would both be giving people credits for tree planting in advance towards future, if they wanted to remove a tree in the future. We've already passed that. But also subsidizing plantings on properties. And the city manager has proposed $5,000 in the budget to do that. I think we can do even more than that. A rewards program, and I like considering a rewards program, Joe, for recycling and composting. And that comes in the form of a fee for trash cans that are larger than the standard size. We need to get back on the greenhouse gas plan and figure out what are concrete ways we're going to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions for the city, not just for the city government, for the city in its entirety. We could like make the city government use no energy, and it's only 4% of the, maximum 4% of the city's total use of greenhouse gases. We should pilot an industrial composting pickup, so household organic waste can be composted. Not sure exactly how we'll do that right away, but we can start and we can pilot the effort, just so that we understand what the collection process would be. We still need to get a commercial composter who's closer. We need a sustainability section of the city website. We need a polystyrene band, and we could also work with S.H.A. on the streetlight timing. I think those are, that's 11 things. There might be other things that are more important, we could shift around. Now, people would say, "Well, how do you pay for that? You proposed $185,000." I think it's actually pretty easy. It starts with, in the budget, there's a proposal for $20,000 to put in new streetlights. When we put in new streetlights, who do you think owns them? The city of Tacoma Park? No, Pepco owns them. So then we're going to do a project to buy those same streetlights back from the city, from Pepco for the city? It's crazy to spend that money on that now. Let's put that money into the Green Deal for Tacoma Park, including this Sustainability Coordinator. We already have $5,000 committed from the tree fund. I would propose that we take another $5,000 from the stormwater fund and use that for tree planting, to subsidize tree planting on private property. It's very clearly, as the, when we had this whole debate about solar panels and trees, the Arbor showed us this very complex website that shows how trees are directly, have a big impact on stormwater management, and particularly overstoryed trees that can grow high. So subsidize planting those. Spend $5,000 from that. Take $100,000 out of the $875,000 we plan in the city budget for spending on capital outlays related to sidewalks, either new sidewalks or ADA compliance on existing sidewalks, and put that into the Green Deal for Tacoma Park. We can afford $100,000 out of that $875. Now, that $875 is Speed Camera Fund, so as many of the wise residents who are good accountants noticed, you could take $100,000, put it into the police budget, because it'll be a public space safety expenditure, and move that $100,000 into general fund and use that to fund the Sustainability Coordinator. And then lastly, we just got news in this salmon sheet of paper, that it looks like we're going to get $110,000 more back from the state in highway user fees. Now, that was money that was cut way down last year. We should take half of that and put it into the Green Deal for Tacoma Park. That gets you to $185,000. Now, I'm not done there. I know I'm talking for a long time. We also, even though we're not increasing the tax rate, we are proposing a budget that has a $395,000 increase in taxes on people, and in this time, I don't think that's appropriate. And I think that there's a way to actually fund it so we can have a true constant yield tax rate. So along with the Green Deal for Tacoma Park, I am proposing that we have a constant yield tax rate, where we don't raise taxes on people. And the way you do that is first, we're proposing something new, which is $250 for a facility replacement reserve, which means buildings depreciate over time. You should start to build a facility replacement reserve. This is the first year we're doing it. We're proposing $250,000 to put into that fund. I think in this tough times, we can't spend that much on it. We should do half of that. We should take $125,000 of that fund, which is really coming out of reserves, and put it towards not increasing the tax base. We should take the other $55,000 from the highway user fees, put it in. That gets you to $180,000. You still have $215 to go. We're also proposing that we grow the equipment replacement reserve. So right now, we're putting $750,000 more dollars into the equipment replacement reserve. So that's not building, that's acknowledging that you're going to have to replace police cars and trash trucks, and there's about $2 million in that reserve fund right now, which is a good idea. But we're proposing to actually grow it, because we're going to put in $750,000, and we're only going to take out like $620,000, I think. So I propose we don't grow it this year. We just put in what we're going to take out. That gives you another $130,000. You have $85,000 left to get to the no increase in taxes, and you take that, again, from the $875,000 we're proposing for sidewalks, repurpose the money. So you're still, in total, spending, you know, close to $700,000 on sidewalks, and you're giving us a budget with no tax increase, and you're getting a Green Deal for Tacoma Park. That's what I would propose moving forward related to the budget. The last two points I would like to make is it's very hard to figure out what we're spending our money on in the budget. And I would propose that we actually make a change to the city code that requires in the city budget, any expenditure over $10,000 be clearly articulated. That's the hurdle which we have to directly vote on, an expenditure. I think that's the hurdle at which the expenditure has to be competitively bid unless there's an exception. That should just be in the budget. It shouldn't, I'm not asking to get down to the detail of what we're spending on pencils, but just the big buckets. So I appreciate I went over, but I think that that's important to think about as we move forward in the budget. We can pay for it, we can have the Green Deal, we cannot raise taxes.
And I would, I'll say this with a smile on my face, I would encourage my colleagues to begin the budget discussion before we reconcile. Councilmember Snipper. And I'll, excuse me. Councilmember Schultz, you're still with us. Do you have any comments?
Yes. In fact, I do have two comments. One is that I received a call earlier this week from Russell Harrington of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, the Parks Division. He told me that the Parks Division has finished installing a brand-new drinking fountain in Becca Lily Park to replace what was destroyed by vandals some years ago. So this is, I've been working on for the last year and a half, and I'm pleased to let everybody know that he tells me, I haven't been able to see it, that the fountain is there and it's in working order, and you can go down there and take a drink. And the reason I haven't seen it is I'm out of town in South Carolina right now, so I'm just taking his word for it. Second comment is that all the public comments that I heard tonight on the public hearing has to do with the environment. And it was interesting to me that no one spoke about issues related to crime, or the police, or tax rate, or the Department of Recreation, or the Department of Public Works, or directly to any of the other important functions of the city. But most importantly, sort of a focus on environmental issues, which I'm in favor of, of course, the absence of comments on everything, on most any other topic of usual concern, causes me to be a little concerned, because it suggests that maybe citizens are telling us, or maybe telling us, or maybe not, that raising the tax rate is not a concern this year, and if they don't, if they think that a Sustainability Coordinator is necessary, or other environmental actions are going to cost the city money, that that's okay. And I just want to make sure citizens understand that if the tax rate is not a concern to us this year, oh, then that's fine. If not, then you should let us know, so that we have a full picture of what it is residents in the city of Tacoma Park actually want. That's all I really wanted to say at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things that other people have already said, so I'll make it even shorter. I appreciate all the work that was done in Sligo Creek and related areas. It was really nice to see lots of folks out. The same thing with regard to the Art Hop. I thought it was a very successful event, as well as some of the other stuff in the community center exhibit here that folks commented to me about, and that's all I'm going to say.
Councilman Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank Councilmember Robinson for the interesting evening tonight with Ward 3 night. I was very impressed with the number of people that showed up and the many different areas that people had commented on. I thank you. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Reif for his well-thought-out proposal for the budget this year. He obviously put many hours into putting together that plan, and I would encourage him to type that up and send it to your colleagues, so that we don't have to depend on our memories for all those items. I appreciate that. And I heard a lot of interest in the environment tonight at the meeting, and as many people know, I'm on the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, and I thought people would be encouraged to know that the theme of the parade this year is going green in Tacoma. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that next week during the council comments, and also the crime need that the committee has for additional volunteers. And I think that many of the people who were here tonight, interested in the environment, might want to participate in the planning of the day's activities on the Fourth of July, because it is a very powerful way to get messages out. And I'll talk more about that next week. Thank you.
I've got a couple of things, I just want to run down the list. I would encourage my colleagues to check out the Budget Game website and read comments that people have left there about the budget. There are a number of comments, and that's another way that we can get some input from I noted today that there was an announcement that came out that the position of poet laureate for the city, the current two-year term will be up in June, and the city, the Arts and Humanities Commission is looking for a new poet laureate, and that's a two-year position and comes with a stipend, I believe, of $2,000 a year. And there's another, there was another announcement for something else that was also $2,000, and it was the...
It was the Exhibits Coordinator.
Exhibits Coordinator. And so both of those positions are, vacancies in those are coming up, and so if people are interested, they should contact the Arts and Humanities Commission. I also enjoyed the Art Hop. I also wanted to mention that there is the, there's a meeting tomorrow for businesses for the Be Smart Business, low-interest loans for energy efficient improvements for businesses. There's also a component of that that is low-interest loans for funding energy efficiency improvements for housing. And people in the city are eligible for that. That's part of the program that Ross Grigsby was here talking about, that came about through Main Street, the Main Street program, but that is open for the whole city.
Do you know if that includes solar panels, Mayor?
I don't know, but there is a website that people can go to to find out more about that, and this is, both single-family and multifamily buildings are eligible, and the website is MDHousing.org/web site slash programs slash be smart.
I went there and I couldn't see solar panels, I didn't see solar panels listed in it. I was wondering. You haven't heard anything?
Don't know.
Okay.
But I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of this program, and it's only people in state-designated Main Street Maryland communities, so it's only people in Berlin, Cumberland, Easton, Havertagh Grace, Tacoma Park, Baltimore City, Cambridge Denton, Elkton, Oakland, Salisbury, Chestertown, Dundalk, Frostburg, Princess Anne, and Westminster. And I think there was $15 million available, and so this is a good opportunity. I also wanted to let folks know that a commercial property owner in the city who has, who still owns a good deal of commercial property in the junction, and who sold the building that historic Tacoma is in, Carl Kessler, had a massive stroke on Friday in Tacoma Junction, and I believe he is either near death or has died at this point, and just wanted to note this with great sadness. Also wanted to make one correction to, I believe, correction to what Councilmember Reif said about the highway user revenue. It's, the total is $110,000, and we already were counting on $26,000, so that the net addition is $84,000?
It's actually higher than that. There's a revenue reconciliation sheet at your place this evening that includes that.
Okay. And I was in Rockville this morning with the city manager and the deputy city manager, talking with the newly-named GO Committee for Government Operations and Fiscal Policy, the former MFP Committee at the county council, and we were there on municipal tax duplication. And the, what the committee decided to do after much discussion, much confusion, was to put two reconciliation items on the list, one for the Tacoma Park Police rebate for probably, it's going to end up $115,000?
I think it's more like $108,000. I think it's more like 108,000.
Okay. Because they were, the numbers were a little bit in flux during the discussion. And then an additional amount of about 220,000 for all of the other, municipal tax duplication for all of the other municipalities, and the non-police portion of the Tacoma Park rebate as well. It was also interesting that there was some discussion going on, not as part of the, of the committee hearing, but among the municipalities and with some of the county folks about some other possibilities for dealing with tax duplication in terms of the tax set-off. And so there were some, there was a real focus by the committee members in feeling that they did not want to be in the position that they've been in this year, last year, and previous years, with tax duplication discussion open, unsettled, and unfinished, and having to have these difficult discussions as part of the county budget process every year. And they wanted to make sure that by the time this discussion time rolls around a year from now, that these issues had been resolved, and everybody agreed that that was what they wanted. So we'll see where things go from there, but there was a fair amount of interesting discussion about how things could be concluded. So I just wanted to let people know that that happened this morning. I think we've finished with council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just one item this evening. Just wanted to let the council know that we were notified earlier today that we have received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, and this is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. I think it's the fourth year in a row, or the fifth year in a row that we've received it, and just wanted to publicly thank our Director of Finance, Yvonda Brooks, for her leadership in our financial management.
Yes, thank you. We're getting kind of used to this.
And we have an easy way for you to remember that, and I thank you for this, but it's the same number of years as you've been with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Legislative update.
Thank you. And the General Assembly closes tonight at midnight. We're waiting to hear the final outcome on a number of items. We do presume that the Tacoma Park alcohol bill isn't going anywhere this session. It's not officially dead yet, but it looks pretty dead.
It will be at midnight.
We have, as you've mentioned, heard good news about highway user revenue. We've also heard a lot of good news about bills we did not want, that didn't go anywhere, and I think that's always good. Today, we were notified that the bill that would have, had only the county issuing building permits for schools, has been withdrawn officially. That would have been one that would have kind of taken away our authority for stormwater, tree, and driveway permits for school buildings. The, I do want to publicly acknowledge the excellent work that Michelle Douglas has done for us. Especially this session, I've gotten to see a lot of her good work and very, and kind of the effects of her discussions with legislators. I think she was particularly effective with the highway user revenue discussions, and had a pretty broad sense of who needed to be tapped on that issue, and got me to do things when I wasn't ready to do them, but I appreciated that she was very astute at telling me when we needed to jump. As the mayor mentioned, the county council was considering, is considering their budget, items that affect us, the GO Committee discussion this morning. On Thursday, there'll be the Health and Human Services Subcommittee discussion on the city's library payment, and that is one where the county executive had cut, I think, 5% also from that. Since the county libraries were cut more than that, and last year George Leventhal wanted to try to match that, it's possible that he will want to cut further. So that's a discussion, the librarian, library director and I will be there on Thursday. The reconciliation for the items that were discussed today isn't until mid-May, so we will hear something when these items go to the full council, which will probably be within the next couple of weeks. But a real decision on some of these items, we won't know the outcome until mid-May.
And it would be good for us to continue to lobby all of the county council members--
Absolutely.
--to make it clear that what's most important to us is the matching of the Tacoma Park Police Rebate to what the county is doing--
That's right. Now, one of the things that the city manager and I have spent an awful lot of time on in the last two weeks is trying to make a very confusing subject a little bit more clear for the county council members. We do have some materials, if you're talking with them, we'll be making sure you have all of those, but one of the things that is confusing is that there's two things that are referred to as the Tacoma Park Police Rebate. The officially titled Tacoma Park Police Rebate is not an area that we are questioning. It's the police, it's the payment out of the municipal tax duplication payment that goes for police services. That's the big number that is the one that we'd like to have restored and actually matched to the increase that the Montgomery County Police Department is giving us here, at least is proposed to get. So as you're talking with county council members, do indicate that it's the police payment portion of the municipal tax duplication item. It's, takes, it's more words, but it helps, helps them focus on which items we care about.
It's the services-based formula, not the assessment-based.
That's right.
Assessment of--
The two pieces, there's, the confusion, the confusion is, there's one Tacoma Park Police Rebate that predates all the other ones, that's based on assessable base.
Above property.
Correct.
That's right, and which went up a little bit, and so that's--
And what they essentially do is net that one out of the services-based one. It gets confusing. They were confused this morning. Their staff continues to be confused.
They're less confused than they would have been.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. Adoption of minutes. We have one set of minutes from January 24th.
Move second.
Moved by somebody over here, and seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Is all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that's carry. Okay. The first item on our regular meeting is a First Reading Ordinance registering, regulating panhandling and prohibiting aggressive panhandling. And the city attorney is here, and we have a First Reading Ordinance that has some changes from our discussion, was it just last week?
They're not substantive changes.
Okay. Do you want to just walk us through that?
Yes, I'll walk you through the whole thing for the benefit of the public. This came out of, last fall, the council repealed some obsolete provisions of the code dealing with morals and conduct. And as part of that, there was a provision that prohibited begging on public space. And we opined that under the case law, begging is essentially a protected activity under the First Amendment. It can't be prohibited outright. So any law that restricts begging, solicitation, or panhandling has to be necessary, narrowly tailored, be a regulation of time, place, and manner, but not content, and has to leave open ample alternate ways of getting forth the message. The police and city staff, the council indicated that they would like to keep some sort of regulation of panhandling. So we drafted this ordinance. We did discuss it at work session. About all I've done since the work session is, previously, the ordinance had used the same number 14, chapter, Title 14, 20-210, as the begging had been. However, that chapter had previously been redesignated as dealing with public space and public building restrictions, so I created a new chapter on panhandling, since it didn't belong where it was before. I just separated out panhandling and passive panhandling, which is allowed. Panhandling is basically a solicitation for money verbally, where you would, or for giving away something that you're really asking for a donation. I would note that it doesn't ban all solicitations, just ones from vocal appeals for money. You can still ask for signatures, for candidates, or for causes, for time, labor, anything other than money. It's not considered panhandling. Panhandling also isn't include, doesn't include various passive activities, such as sitting, sitting with a sign, performing music, or other indication that a donation is being sought, but without a verbal appeal, other than a response to a request. We are proposing to prohibit panhandling altogether at nighttime, and during certain, at certain locations in the city that would seem to be especially unwanted or bothersome, or you would feel vulnerable to coercion, such as bus stops, sidewalk cafes, or within 20 feet of a bank entrance or an ATM machine. The police specifically asked that we prohibit, to the extent possible, panhandling directed at persons in motor vehicles. City law can't duplicate the restrictions already in the Maryland Vehicle Law. I separated those out. That's now D2 on page two. Essentially, the state law prohibits a person from actually standing in the roadway, from soliciting rides, employment, or business from the occupant of a vehicle. And business is also thought of as asking for money or the like. The state law, also for Montgomery County, prohibits minors from standing in the roadway to solicit money or donations. If it's a minor who's doing it, all they can get is a warning. But we can't duplicate those restrictions, so I expressly indicated that these activities were already prohibited by state law. But in number one, we've extended the restriction against panhandling directed at the occupant of a motor vehicle from somebody who's in a parking lot, a median divide, or a traffic island, a sidewalk, walking path, or private property adjacent to the roadway, as well as in the roadway, which is already prohibited. Aggressive panhandling is banned at all times, not just at night, and that includes behavior such as touching the person without their consent, panhandling against somebody who's standing in line and basically captive, can't move, blocking the path of somebody entering a building, following behind or alongside a person who's walked away, or has said, "I don't want to donate," or other aggressive activity. There's a reasonable person standard, whether or not they would feel fearful or not. There are penalties for this in the new law, although the police chief has indicated that he completely expects this to be complaint-driven, and very few citations, if any, to be issued. More likely, they just say, "Move along." But prohibited panhandling would be a misdemeanor, a Class C offense. That has a maximum penalty of $500 and prison for up to one month. And aggressive panhandling would have, would be a Class B misdemeanor offense, which is a $500 fine maximum, and/or imprisonment for up to three months, or it could be charged as a civil offense. And we've looked at the case law and think that this is permitted restriction of panhandling if the council decides to go that way.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really great. I think you've addressed a number of issues that people were concerned about. I have two very small suggestions, corrections. At the top of page two, the very first line on that page starts with a list of places where panhandling is prohibited, and you have bus stop. I suggest we add taxi stand, or whatever the correct words would be for a taxi stand. And then I had a question about the sidewalk cafe phrase, because you said "in a sidewalk cafe." Do we need to be more explicit about it being the outside portion of a sidewalk cafe, or the tables on the outside?
I don't think there is an inside portion. Either the panhandler or the person being solicited has to be in the sidewalk cafe. Presumably, it's the person being solicited, but--
So I guess the question is, some cafes have chairs outside. Is that a sidewalk cafe?
That's what I think of a sidewalk cafe as, outdoor seating area.
I was just concerned that this was referring to being inside rather than outside.
I always thought of a sidewalk cafe as outdoor seating, but I guess I--
Okay.
If I may, generally, when there is a sidewalk cafe, when there's outdoor seating, they've identified the area that that pertains to. It's usually, it's usually blocked off, it's usually been permitted at a certain--
Right.
--at a certain dimension.
Is that it on the changes?
Yeah, that's it.
Would somebody like to move this with the suggested addition of taxi stand in that first line?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any further discussion? Any public comment?
Yes, my name is Miles again, 7648 Gladwell, East Carolina. I'd like to ask a question, like, when you guys are suggesting that the median strips, minors begging on median strips, panhandling, I think, you know, we should make the median strips part of the highway, part of the roadway, because that's what it is. It's put in there to divide, like, the north and the south on traffic, separate, to prevent accidents. That's what a median is for. It is part of a roadway. It's built as part of a roadway. The second thing is, is another reason I'd like to see that prevented, because anybody can drive by and snatch that minor, and take that kid and take his money, beat him, rape him, and we can find his bones in the woods 18 months from now. You know, and any pervert coming up and down that road can abduct that child, and I don't want to see that happening. Second thing I want to ask is, you said that more than one person panhandling could be considered aggressive. What if it's her mother and her two infants, or something like that, and a child, or something like that, a whole family gone homeless? I don't consider that aggressive if they're out there following the same rules. If they're not, if they're not following somebody when they say no, or they're not threatening them or anything, I don't see anything wrong with it, because they're going to eat too. You know, I don't think the number of people on itself should be considered aggressive, because there are, I've seen times when, I've met panhandlers with more than one person in it, and I got to talk to them and everything else. Now, they weren't aggressive, you know, although sometimes they can be, but I think it's only when they're following you, or when they're really getting nasty about not getting the money, that's different. But other than that, I don't think the number of people should be considered aggressive, like a mother and a family out there begging. I don't see anything wrong with that. So I think those two things you should concentrate on, make the median strip part of the roadway and be done with the issue. That will stop any kid from being on the median, taking a risk getting hit by a car or abducted by a pervert. I don't want to see that happen. I have to bring that up. Make it safer for the children, because, you know, some people are saying children aren't to beg just to get their money for their father for drugs, and you see them in the medians in some cities, and I don't like to see that. I worry about that. And also, please, think about it when you make the number of people considered aggressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just answer one of them.
Yes.
Minors are already prohibited from either standing in the roadway or on the median strip. The state law has defined roadway as the paved portion of the road, but minors are prohibited from standing in the median strip. We're also adding adults from, to that.
And the reason, and the reason that we're talking about the median strip is because the state regulates the road, and so we're adding the median strip?
Yeah, except for minors.
Right. Okay. Go ahead.
Joe Ezell, 1001 Elm Avenue. I heard the discussion about this ordinance last week, and I was troubled, and I'd like to ask each of you to maybe reconsider your approach, where you seem to be moving forward with this. Certainly, places where people feel threatened, bank teller machines, aggressive panhandling where people are blocking entrances, that makes sense. But why do we need to regulate people's conduct when they're asking for money? They're standing in a median strip, the lights red-- They're standing in a median strip, the light's red, no one's at risk. We feel in Tacoma Park like we need to regulate everybody's conduct, and I just don't understand why that's necessary. I'm a former prosecutor and a former defense attorney. I'm well-versed in the criminal justice system. Even the police last week said, "Yeah, we don't really use this law. It's just a tool once in a while." Well, maybe it's a tool that they don't need. And maybe poor people should be able to ask for cash once in a while, and if it crosses that line into aggressiveness, maybe that's what we need to prohibit. But all of these other restrictions, safety, why do we need to protect people from themselves? This is just one of those things that we have other things that are more important to be looking at, and I'd ask that you focus your time on those things and not on something that even the police said they don't really use. We don't need to stop people from begging. We need to learn, if we don't want to give money, to say no. This is merely a law that's for our convenience to not tell people, "No, we're not going to give them money if we don't want to," and I don't think that's right.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Any other council comment? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I tried last week to voice the concerns that we just heard here tonight. I wish I was as eloquent as the gentleman who was just at the podium, but I think he encapsulated my feelings from last week, that, you know, I certainly see value in protecting people who are approached in an aggressive manner, but I know there are many people in the community who are less fortunate than us that need money and have found no better way than to ask someone for a solicit donation from somebody. The thing that I feel most uncomfortable about those portions of this ordinance are the, is the fact that we don't offer an alternative for those people. For those reasons, I plan to vote no on this.
Councilmember Robinson.
Are the sections at issue the standing in the street sections? Would that be fair to say, Councilmember Siemens?
It's the standing on the median or on the sidewalks. I think that the state law certainly covers those situations where people, you know, step down into the street to ask for money. It's already prohibited. So I would say that's the part of it, yes, that is most troublesome.
Are you, would you offer an amendment to take certain sections out, or are you just planning to vote against?
I would, I would suggest taking that section out and with the understanding that the state law already protects the individuals from stepping into the street and also protects the vehicle drivers and occupants from feeling threatened by people coming that close should they not want.
So you're saying drop D1?
I don't have it open, but yes, if that's the one on the median and sidewalk.
It's the one that unlawful from a parking lot or a median or traffic island.
If you drop D1, you might as well drop 2.
Right. 2 just says this doesn't apply to the state law, right?
Right. So I'm suggesting dropping...
So drop D.
So I would move that, yes.
Okay, so you're moving an amendment to strike D?
Right.
And I second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. We'll continue discussion, and then we'll get back to the amendment. Councilmember Clay?
So my understanding is that you can stand on the, you can stand on the sidewalk and ask people for money as they walk by, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I want to say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not usually intimidated by people who are panhandling. And I'll tell you a little bit about something that happened to me when I came to work at Corporation for National Service where I work now, and I don't, I don't usually talk about this, because I don't always talk about all the things that I do for people, but I will tell you this little bit of story. When I came there, there were several homeless people around the building, and I usually pick out someone in the community where I live or in the community where I work that I decide to help and concentrate on. And over a two-year period, myself and a person upstairs from DHS and the bank manager at the corner helped this, this couple, Phil and Teresa, who'd been homeless for 15 years. I gave them $20 a week for two years to help them with their sheltering, and I went through the process with them to get their IDs, and I helped them to get, they were both disabled, so I helped them both get to Social Security Disability. I got a little bit of advice from some of my friends in Ward Two who were housing lawyers that regularly work with homeless people, and we got connected to a social worker in Washington, DC, who used the program that Adrian Fenty had developed to get people into, into housing, one of the Housing First programs. And last winter, after, I watched them on the, on the streets for two years in winter, they got housing on Minnesota Avenue section of southeast, and I still occasionally talk to them. They don't panhandle anymore because they have money through the Social Security. And they, I got a call from them last month. They're still doing okay. I've helped them identify places where they could get furnishings and things, you know, that they need, and we have a non-monetarily-based relationship at this point. And the reason why I'm sharing this story is because, you know, I'm not afraid to help homeless people. I'm not afraid to engage homeless people on the street, and, and I actively work on these issues. But I have to tell you that the times when I have been startled and felt threatened in the last year have included times when I have been approached while I've been sitting in a cafe, a sidewalk cafe where I've been seated. I was on travel in Denver, and this guy scared the hell out of me when he came up to me and startled me and asked for money and kind of got right up into the space where I was at. I'm always, I'm always very cautious when I'm around people who are panhandling from the median. It bothers me. I watch for people in traffic. I do not like being approached in my car because I've been threatened in my car, and maybe it's part of being a female and being out, being at night, but I don't like it, and I don't want anyone to approach me while I'm in my car. It feels, it's just different. It feels much more threatening to me. I'm there with car keys. I've got kids in my car. You know, I know about the carjackings and things like that. And, and the other place where I feel threatened is when I'm close to the bank, and I'm very careful and watch about, you know, getting money out of the bank. And so I'm going to support the ordinance as it is, because I agree. I think people should be, you know, people have free speech rights. They should be able to ask for money on the corner, and I engage people who ask for money on the corner. But the three areas that we've outlined, I regularly feel threatened when people approach me in that way, and I would like not to be approached while I'm in my vehicle, and I would like not to be approached while I'm near the bank, and I would like not to be approached when I'm seated in an outdoor cafe and someone comes up alongside of me and startles me. That's just how I feel about it.
Councilmember Snipper.
I guess the short version is I too have, the way I deal with people who are panhandling, which is I give to everyone a small amount, because I hate being put in the position of having to judge on the basis of appearance or whatever. So I just give to everyone a small amount. And I do it in the, all the places that are not prohibited in here, that is, on the sidewalk. But I don't do it from cars for just the reasons that Councilmember Clay was talking about, and similarly for banks and sidewalk cafes and so, and so on. So going into a lot of additional detail, I will say that I support the ordinance as written.
And before I go to Councilmember Robinson, I'll just say I'm going to support the ordinance as written, that I've always had concerns about people panhandling, particularly from the median, and what I'm most concerned about is not my safety, but their safety. And I think the interaction of people on foot and people in cars can be very, I'm not sure the best way to phrase this, but I'll say the power difference just in terms of the size of the vehicle, the ability to hurt somebody, and people have a hard enough time being, not being distracted, and to add that distraction and add the possibility for somebody getting hurt, and somebody who's going to get hurt is the person who's standing in the median. And I also want to make sure that Councilmember Schultz has a chance to weigh in if he needs to, but Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Schultz, you have anything to say?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I concur with Councilmember Clay, Councilmember Snipper, and yourself on this thing. I think that we're not really deprived of panhandles, panhandlers of an opportunity to obtain money. This is just a very, very narrow, a very small narrowing of the potential of a person's opportunity, and I support the ordinance as written.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, I, I think that part of our job up here is to preserve people's freedoms as best we can, and so that's why I support Councilmember Siemens' amendment, because I think it's, I think it's important to protect those freedoms. And I've been a little bit of a student, although I don't give money to people in car, when I'm in my car. I've been a little bit of a student of people who panhandle when I'm in my car, and it's, sometimes it puts me off because it's, they sort of work it, you know, they kind of, they sort of work it. They walk up and down. I'm thinking in particular of piney branches that hits New Hampshire Avenue, and there's one or two people who have pretty severe disabilities who walk up and down that little stretch, and so the question is, to what extent do I want to reduce that person's freedom to act in the way that he's acting? I don't think it's, I mean, it is somewhat dangerous. I agree, somewhat dangerous to both. But I see a lot of people giving money to that, to those guys, and I think that's how they make their living, and I wouldn't want to deprive them of their living, even though it puts peoples in, people in cars a little bit at risk and makes them a little bit uncomfortable. All you have to do is roll up your window or whatever. So I'm with Councilmember Siemens on this, and I'm good with the rest of it, but, but I think that, that people are already prohibited from panhandling on the street, and I'm not going to vote, I'll, I'll vote with Councilmember Siemens on that amendment.
Any further comment? Okay, we've got an amendment on the floor, and that's to strike Section D. All those in favor of striking Section D, please say aye.
Aye.
I hear three ayes. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Schultz?
Nay.
So I hear four nays. The amendment is defeated. We now have the ordinance as written on the floor. Any further comments? All those in favor of the ordinance as written, please say aye.
Oh, it's with the amendment.
Oh, with, with, sorry, with the amendment of the taxi stand on the first line on page two, which was a friendly amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. All those opposed?
Nay.
I count that as five to two in favor. So that ordinance passes at first reading. The next item is a second reading ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into agreement for processing credit card and other electronic payments. We have first reading of this discussion. Is there any further discussion or comment by the council? Moved by Councilmember Snipper.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clay. Any public comment? This is a second reading ordinance requiring a roll call. We'll, please call a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, then the next item is a first reading ordinance awarding contract for lighting and city TV technology improvements. Does somebody want to move the ordinance?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Snipper, seconded by Siemens. Did the deputy city manager have something he wanted to say?
I don't know if you have any questions. We did, I think, provide some additional information on the reasoning for, with the microphones to allow the television staff that work out of the dance studio, studio, to have control over the, kind of turning on and off the microphones if something's not done here, whether it's you or somebody else using the dais for a meeting purpose. The cost with the override control option, as mentioned last, two weeks ago, is just over $9,000. The cost without that override control is about $3,100. All of these items together cost about $100,000. That would be coming out of the, about $400,000 that are in our cable account. We are expecting another $500,000 to $600,000 next year towards this account, and as was suggested last week, two weeks ago, discussions about how we use that would be something that we'd want to do with the council for those remaining funds. If you've got any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
The question I have is, do people want to include the lighting demonstration? I don't personally feel like I need the lighting demonstration, that we need to spend $2,435 on that, but I wanted to see what colleagues thought. Councilmember Robinson?
I'd like to have the lighting demonstration, but I'm now feeling against having changes to the microphone system. I'm fine with them the way they are.
Councilmember Clay?
Well, ordinarily, I would say that we would engage professional lighting designers, and they would understand the theater lighting versus the council lighting, but that's what I thought we did the first time around. So what a drag it would be to just spend the money and then decide that we hated the second round, and so what's the whole thing? It's $90,000 overall. I mean, I know it's more than...
The total amount for all of this is just about $100,000. Since we discussed this a couple weeks ago, I was informed that there were some price increases on some of the server things, so it went up, I think, about $5,000.
So this is written as not to exceed $110?
That's right, and that would, so that would allow, if you wanted, the lighting demonstration, that kind of thing to...
Well, it seems like if they install the demonstration and we like it, then we shouldn't have to pay for it. We should only have to pay for it if they then have to go back and remove it.
Well, you need to purchase the equipment and...
We should get a credit towards the purchase of the equipment, though.
What's the, is the $2,000 for their time here, or is it for...
It's primarily for the time to set it all up and work with them.
But don't they have to do that anyway if they install it?
I guess they have to set it up, show us what it's like, take it down.
That's right.
If we like it, come back and set it up again.
That's right.
Could they come and set it up, and if we like it, they just leave it up? Or is that...
They have to be permanently, you know...
They're just placement to see if we like it.
All right, well, I think, given what happened with the first round of the lighting designers, I don't want to spend an extra $2,000, but I think it might be a wise move.
And hearing my colleagues' comments, I will concur. I will withdraw my suggestion. I was trying to save money. Councilmember Wright?
So just want to be clear, this is coming from a pot of money. There's $400,000 in it, and you said it's going to add, more money's going to get added to it relatively soon?
Yes. Primarily, we get money from the cable companies on a regular basis. A large portion goes to just things that are tied to cable equipment, and so it's, unfortunately, it can't be used for people. It can't be used for a variety of other purposes that we would like it to be used for, but it sure as heck can be used for equipment and other kind of operation, other kinds of things that are related to the operation of city TV other than...
Right. So I'm totally, I think that we should do the task, the $2,000 task, because I agree, like, it could be... test, because I agree, like, it could be crazy, that's a lot of money, and it could be not good still. I definitely think we should do the microphones. I mean, I think of, this is, I've heard from city staff, sometimes they don't like it when we change their mind a lot. I think this would be one of the things that would drive them crazy. We've been complaining about the microphones for months, probably close to a year now, since they were put in. And so they spent time, they went out and did it, and now I think it would be insane for us not to go for it also, because I think it's the right thing, and we have the money to do it. And I would, I would do the other things as well, the digital conversion and the playoff system. I do want to see, where is it codified, how we can spend the money? Is that codified in the state law, or what's the...
Well, actually, I will, I will find out. There certainly is some language in the county code, there's agreements that we have as part of the franchises with the three cable companies. I know there's federal law involved in this as well. One of the things that the county and many jurisdictions, we in many jurisdictions are trying to do is, I think it's called the CAP Act, basically to allow the, these kinds of funds to be able to use, you know, by municipalities towards the general fund, you know, things that we would like to, to see.
Right, so I'd actually request that we actually get to see the, whatever ordinances or agreements are dictated.
Certainly, and also the...
But that's, that would stop me from voting on it, but I just, similar to the speed camera money, where I was personally confused, so I don't want to be confused in this case either. I want to understand how we can spend the money, because maybe if it is capital, but we could use it in creative ways, like we could get YMAX up around the city and every kind of, could have internet access, or maybe it can be used to pay contractors to run programming, for kids to actually use the equipment and get trained in...
And we do that, actually, with our, with our...
With our own money, but can we use this?
No, no, we use the cable, we've used cable equipment money, for example, to set up the, in terms of contractors to run some of that, I understand that there are some options for that.
So, yeah, we don't have to watch the whole thing, you got my point. I just want to know how we can...
Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you. I agree that we should do the test, because I also would hate to spend, and find out it's still not quite ready. And it's a small addition to the total cost of the project to essentially ensure that it will be what we want. Let's not...
Remember, I withdrew my, my request there. Councilmember Robinson?
Well, I don't think it's insane to, to ask for a price for buttons and then get a price, and then decide you don't want to spend nine thousand dollars on replacing ten buttons. I think that's reasonable. And, and I do think that this is a straightforward way to, if you want to push the button and not have people hear, all you have to do is push the button, as opposed to having somebody who can't see us four, four rooms away, have to determine whether we've got our button on, and if we don't, then they can override it and all of that. I just think this is a clean, I mean, it would have been great to have just plain old reversed them, but given the nine thousand dollars, even though we have five hundred thousand dollars to spend or whatever, I, I can't see it. I, I think it's a waste of money to spend nine thousand dollars on replacing our buttons. So I, I disagree that it's insane, and I think it's a reasonable thing to not spend it.
So you don't want somebody pushing your buttons?
I don't want people, they've already been pushing my buttons.
Any further comment? Any public comment? This is a first reading ordinance, all those in favor of it as drafted.
Clarification?
Yes?
This is, this was moved with the button change in there and with the test in there, correct? The lighting test?
It was, it was moved as the, as written for, to a maximum up to a hundred and ten, which includes the buttons and the test.
I move, I move to amend this to remove the buttons.
I'm not hearing a second.
I guess you're not.
Diocese, for lack of a second. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Two weeks ago, when we talked about these, we also talked about an upgrade of the Granicus system. A single reading ordinance is only, is needed for an upgrade of Granicus system. This basically is our system that allows video access to our council meetings. The video is stored offsite, the, it is coordinated with the minutes, and there's a variety of, first of all, the system that we got in 2006 is aging, and the equipment needs to be updated, but there's a, a variety of other kinds of software upgrades that would come with a new server and other, and the other improvements helps allow us to use some mobile technology, to have some interactivity with the citizens, and it would increase, and it would improve the quality of the video that comes from this system. The, in the previous...
I would like to move it.
I'm sorry, that's, no.
I'd like to move it.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Robinson. Other questions? I have one. The citizen participation package?
Yes. Jesse, could you, could you describe what's in the citizen participation package? Well, this is an opportunity for when there is an item coming up, that citizens can provide written testimony through their computer in advance, and it kind of goes into an information system that's shared with council.
So, so it, it systematizes getting that input rather than saying email at...
It's an additional public testimony option.
And you have to manually say, okay, now it's part of this particular thing?
Exactly. We, we think that, you know, if we try it out and try to channel the comments to that system, and, and we could open all the agenda items for the same kind of comment, of course, having it channeled in that direction may actually be a time saver and may help keep the record a little more tight.
And might improve our chance to get timely comments.
Right, it might.
And might drive us all to have laptops in here.
It might. And we should, we should note, we're getting it at a bit of a discount for the first few months, so we'll have a chance to try it out. If, if it's not helping, if we give it six months or so and it's not, it's not effective, then we can always drop it later.
Thanks. Councilmember Robinson?
I'm, I'm fine with this. I did want to, just while you're up here, Suzanne, and based on a comment I read in Gilbert about something I said last week about this, which was having a long-term, having you come back with some kind of long-term view of what we're trying to do with all this money that we got in the pot. And he, he sort of, he alluded that I was just trying to paper over the, the amount of money we're spending on what we're spending, which is not the case. I really do want to see you come back or have staff come back with, with a discussion about where we're going with, with the money that we're getting.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comments on this single reading ordinance? Mr. Lottos? Did I miss Councilmember Schultz? Did you have a comment?
No, I'm, I'm happy with the ordinance the way it is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good ordinance, but one question I'd like to ask on it, what you guys were saying about citizen participation. I'm all for the idea of having a computer, that where people can, can get on their laptops and their computer and put in early testimony. But I'd like to also see something else, too. A telephone number, that older people who cannot see, or cannot have any sensation in the hands or whatever, amputees, they can call in and, and voice their opinion over the telephone, and it can be recorded, and council members can get it that way, too. I'd like to see that, because there's a lot of people, if they just use computers, that are going to be left out, the world goes right by us. I'm totally blind and can't access a computer, the sixth thing is amputated, and the other's not that good.
I appreciate that. I, I will say that...
And we need a call-ins line, like I've been mentioning before.
I will say that anyone who has any disability that needs assistance or wants to leave a message can give me a call, I'm the contact. Also, the city clerk is happy to take those messages, and we immediately share them with the council. So my number is on all of these documents that are announcements of the council meetings, as is, and the city clerk is easily available as well. We're happy to help you with by phone.
Thank you very much, but I'd also like to see that also on the public, public forums, also where people can call in, if they can't get, because I'd like to see one hundred percent citizen participation in Tacoma Park. Because a lot of times, I notice that, you know, that if I haven't got a computer, the world just rushes right on by me, everything is going to computer and tiny screens and stuff. And eventually, they go into touchscreen, and buttons are being replaced by touchscreen, and I don't know what us blind people are going to do.
Don't worry, Pat, we're all going, we're going to do an ordinance to go completely analog next year.
Completely analog? Everything's digitalized. Well, digital, I don't have anything against it. But I'd like to also see a system put up where all of us can participate, like if we can't get to a public forum, we're in the hospital, we just got home, we can call in and, and participate also. I'd like to be able to see that. You know, like Councilmember Schultz calls in when he's, he's out of the meeting, but I'd like to also see it where people can call in on a public forum. We should have a number set aside for that, like a call-ins line. I'd like to see that. Thank you for letting me share. So one hundred percent participation in Tacoma Park is what I want to see. Hundred percent inclusion, that's what I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, this is a single reading ordinance. Will clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, we now go to our budget work session items. It's ten forty-seven. We want to do these, maybe we'll get through them fairly quickly. City manager?
I will do my best. Probably to start off, you might want to go into the fund summary tab of your budget binders, go back about four or five pages to the one that's entitled General Fund Revenues. It's a fairly detailed listing of the projected revenues for next year. Rest assured, I will not be walking through each and every one of them, but it might just be helpful for you to refer to. Also, I wanted to call to your attention the additional information that is at your place at the DIAS this evening. There is a, kind of a revenue reconciliation sheet that is before you this evening that basically notes the additional monies in highway user revenue that we just learned about late Friday afternoon, based on the state legislature's action. And there are also two minor items under services and charges that we went back and refined those numbers based on additional information. The net impact of those proposed three changes is an increase in revenues of a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to the general fund. I'm going to give kind of a high, very high level overview of what's happening with general fund revenues, and certainly if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. With the changes I just mentioned, overall general fund revenues would increase by five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. These are updated figures from what was in the original agenda packet, based on the reconciliation items, so...
Can you say that again?
I'm sorry, listen, I'm afraid. I'm going to update the numbers that are on kind of the blue sheet. Overall general fund revenues would be up by five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. The majority of that would come under the revenue category that is referred to as taxes and utility fees. Two numbers that you might just want to jot down for real property taxes, this is assuming that the rate stays at fifty-eight cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The increased revenue would be three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then, as we just talked about, highway user revenues would go up by roughly another hundred and ten thousand dollars. Just some general comments about some of the other revenue categories. Intergovernmental revenues are projected to go up by about seventy-two thousand dollars, in spite of the executive's proposed reduction in tax duplication payments. The basic reason for that has to do with the increase in the county police rebate. Once again, this is not the tax duplication payment, this is the portion of the police payment that is based on the assessable base. There was an error made by the county staff when they were doing the computations for their own budget last year. We are getting the money, but from a budget to budget standpoint, this revenue source alone would go up by about two hundred and five thousand dollars, which is basically reflecting the city's strong property values despite the downturn in the housing market. Just kind of as a...
Did they make the mistake last year, and we get that money as well, or they just...
No, they made the mistake in their budget figure. They had budgeted about seven hundred and seventeen thousand, more or less, and we're actually going to get this year about eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. The one thing I think just to remember as we kind of talk about property taxes and the assessable base is the impact of the homeset property tax credit. To some degree, we are probably still writing off the extremely rapid escalation in property values that happened, kind of, you know, 2004, 2005, up until the last couple of years. So that's probably a portion of what we're seeing, rather than necessarily true property growth. Some other things, just to sort of note, fines and forfeitures, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in a minute, are projected to go up very slightly. We have proposed, as part of this budget, some adjustments in some fees, and we can walk through those in a little bit more detail momentarily. Use of money in property, this is the investment revenues the city gets on its portfolio. We talked about this a little bit last week. This has been something just because of the very low, low interest rates. We're not earning a lot on our money, and as you'll notice on the front page of the cover sheet, we budgeted seventy-six thousand dollars this year, we're projecting to only get fifty-eight thousand. And we're projecting a slight uptick next year, up to a whopping sixty thousand. And this was a revenue source that if you go back five years ago, we were getting close to four hundred thousand dollars. Charges for service is projected to go up by about seventy-one thousand dollars. About half of that, more or less, is attributable to increased revenues from recreation programs and services, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that from Deborah when she appears before you this Thursday. This is also another category where we have proposed some increases in some fees, which is partially attributing to the variance. Miscellaneous revenues is exactly that, it's sort of a general catchall, and if you look kind of in the detailed revenue section under general fund revenues, you'll see sort of a breakdown. This is a category that we're actually projecting to go down by about sixty-one thousand dollars. And the reason for that is we got a FEMA grant, FEMA reimbursement this fiscal year for the storms that happened in February of 2010. So that's really sort of the very high picture of general fund revenues. I did want to call your attention in the additional new information, there is a detailed listing of the fees that the staff has proposed be adjusted for the fiscal year. I recognize, I apologize for not getting this done in time for the packet, we spent a lot of time last week kind of working the police rebate issue. But my guess is that later in the process, you all may want to take a look at these proposed adjustment in fees and provide some direction as to whether or not you're comfortable with all of them or any of them. One thing I did just particularly want to call to your attention has to do with the library. And I think this is a kind of a policy issue for the council. Certainly, we have seen, you know, decreases in the library payment in eleven, another decrease is proposed for twelve. To date, we have treated Montgomery County residents who do not reside within the corporate boundaries of Tacoma Park as essentially city residents for the purpose of using the library. You know, this is ultimately a policy decision for the council, but I think the decreases from the county sort of call into question in my mind, do we want to treat, keep treating county residents as city residents when the county keeps reducing the aid that we get for those services? So this is an issue that I talked about with Ellen, and she'll be here Thursday night and can kind of walk you through these numbers in a little bit more detail, but what we are proposing is that we no longer basically give Montgomery County residents who do not reside in Tacoma Park free access to library services, that we do impose some type of library card fee, and that we also raise the fee that we are charging for non-McGumry County residents. Currently, it's only ten dollars a year if you live in Prince George's, if you live in DC. And it's not just strictly a monetary issue, one of the things that Ellen brought up in our discussion is this idea that we may have city residents, for example, trying to use the computers in the computer learning center, who may actually end up waiting in line because we're so inexpensive that there are people who are not city residents basically ahead of them in line. So I think this is a revenue, you know, to some degree a revenue issue, I think reflecting what the county has done. But I think equally important is, do we want to provide a fee structure that gives priority to city residents for using the services that they're paying for?
Barb, why does it say included above in the three bottom ones?
What we, but the figure that Ellen gave me, and we can certainly break it down for you, Councilmember Robinson, besides the two fee issues I just mentioned, Ellen and I have also discussed charging a little bit more for some of the copies that are being... also discussed charging a little bit more for some of the copies that are being made.
Okay, so the 10, 8, 8 includes all four of them.
Right, includes all four of them. Sorry, it wasn't more clear.
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
Is there anything in terms of the, I guess we call it library rebate that we get from the county, is there any language in that that says that we have to treat county residents in a certain way?
No, we talked about that quite extensively, and we don't believe that there is.
Okay, because I know sometimes with various pieces of things that we've done and funding from the county that there have been agreements that we have to treat county residents essentially equally or just a slight change.
Right. That's correct. I guess, given the lateness of the hour, I didn't want to dwell in lots of detail. But are there some questions about general fund revenues that I can answer at least this evening?
Councilmember Clay.
I just want to say that I supported the fee changes and especially where we charge the county residents additional fees for the true cost of them participating in any of the programs that our residents pay for with their taxes.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I definitely want to hear more about this Thursday when we get into the library component. But just instinctively, I'm attracted to the deal raising on Tacoma Park. It just feels like it do, given the county's actions. I'm going to be hopeful. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
There's a very, very high level of general fund expenditures, because obviously you'll have a chance to dig into this a little bit more when you meet with the individual department. As we talked about, we are a service industry, so most of our costs are going to be personnel. Approximately 55% of proposed general fund expenditures, I'm sorry, 55% of all fund expenditures are personnel-related. General fund expenditures, as proposed, would go down by about $1.6 million. That's primarily due to the public works facility renovation. Most of that will be done this fiscal year. So if you look down sort of the chart in the agenda packet, you'll see that capital expenditures are going down by about $2.8 million. Kind of offsetting that 2.8 million is a proposed increase in the debt service budget of approximately $960,000, which we'll talk about momentarily. And then the balance of kind of the increases in the general fund budget are primarily personnel, specifically increases in employee health insurance, and the increased contribution for the state retirement system for civilian employees.
Okay, are there any questions on that section? Councilmember Schultz, you good on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only other thing I would probably just comment very briefly is I think right behind general fund revenues, the detailed sheet, you might want to look at the general fund, the fund balance projection detail. Given some of the comments earlier this evening, this will also be something that the council will, you know, kind of talk about, I think, as you go through the process. Just kind of as a reminder, we have several existing restricted portions of our fund balance. There is an emergency reserve, which is specified in the charter. It is not a fund. We replenish unless money is taken out of that particular reserve. We have not taken any funds out of the emergency reserve in the seven, almost seven years I've been with the city. But should we withdraw funds from that, it does have to be established back at a certain base level. There is the equipment replacement reserve. As proposed, for FY12, we would be contributing $750,000. We would be withdrawing about $619,000. One of the things, I jotted myself a to-do list that I will get to you all, because obviously when you look at the CIP included in the budget document, you're only seeing a five-year picture. And I'll try to see if I can give you a little bit more detail of what funds will be coming out of that reserve in the next 10 to 15 years. There is a reserve for former WSSC contribution for future street work. I think most of the council is aware that when WSSC has come in and sort of torn up some streets, such that their streets were going to be resurfacing, there is sort of a road resurfacing agreement where they contribute those funds for those particular streets. When those streets come back up in the rehabilitation cycle, those funds would be removed from that reserve and expended, offsetting some of the city's expenses. There are no bond proceeds. That will be expended next fiscal year. And then, as proposed, we would be setting up a new facility maintenance reserve and contributing $250,000 towards that. Similar to the equipment replacement reserve, I'll make an effort before, you know, in the next week to try to jot down some of the facility-related expenses that we see coming up. Some of those have been previously funded in the equipment replacement reserve, some had not. So we'll get you some more information on that. The bottom line, as proposed, is we would have a reserve fund balance as of June 30 of 2012 of just about $3 million. We would have an unreserved fund balance of about, my eyes are going this late at night, about 3.7, with a total fund balance of 6.7 million. So obviously, as you all talk through the budget, these numbers, you know, are likely will shift. In fact, will shift probably a little bit based just on the new revenue numbers we received on Friday.
Any questions? Okay. Move on to the next question.
The next budget that's coming up is non-departmental. You might want to switch to that tab in your budget binder. This should not take all that long. I'll be brief. The overall budget will be about $906,000 roughly, and this is a decrease of about $36,000 compared to budgeted expenditures. And the primary reason for the decrease is lower cost for insurance coverage, specifically workers' compensation. 47% of non-departmental expenditures as proposed are personnel-related. And as you probably noticed on the departmental summary sheet, the largest component of that is workers' compensation. And we would estimate expending next year $280,000. One thing I did just want to touch on briefly this evening, I sent the council an email about this back in January, but if you look at the workers' compensation line and you look at the FY11 budget, and then you look at the estimated FY11, obviously, one number is larger than the other, and just wanted to touch on that. We switched carriers this year. We were previously part of the Montgomery County Self-Insurance Program. And Mayor Williams, at the budget hearings today, you probably heard Mr. Fleming being asked about this by the county council or by the committee. Our actual costs this year are less than budget because we did switch carriers. We switched to the injured workers' fund. So there were some savings in that account. Offsetting that, we have to resolve a contractual issue with Montgomery County Self-Insurance Program. I know it's been a while, but I sent you all an email. We have two choices when we withdrew from the Montgomery County program. One is to basically pay them a one-time lump sum payment to leave all claims that are still open with them. They then accept all future liability for the claims. The other is that we take some money back, and then we are responsible for the claims. We did hire a consultant to do some work for us to basically look at the reserve amounts that Montgomery County had set up for the city's claims that were still pending at the time we withdrew. And, you know, he's also very knowledgeable about kind of what happens in the workers' comp field. One of the things that has evolved over time, particularly as the federal government is looking not to have increased Medicare expenses, is there was a time and place where basically you'd have a workers' comp claim, it gets, you know, closed, it's all neat. That's not really happening anymore. What the federal government is now doing, which from their standpoint is a very good thing to do, is basically tracking someone who has had a workers' comp injury. They've got a database set up. So if I had a back injury and had filed a workers' comp claim against the city of Tacoma Park, and 25 years from now I go to file a Medicare claim, they're going to actually be able to link those things and say, wait a minute, this isn't a Medicare claim that the federal government should pay for. This was a workers' comp claim that Barb Matthews had, and her employer at the time should be responsible for that workers' comp claim. In the short term, you know, we would probably get enough money back from Montgomery County, and short, I say short in that kind of timeframe, to cover the claims. We do have some closed workers' comp claims that involved public safety officers who had heart and lung conditions. Those are very expensive conditions. I can assure you, the payout that we made on those claims for workers' comp for those employees was expensive to begin with, but those tend to be conditions that people continue to need medical treatment over many, many years. We also would have to administer any kind of ongoing workers' comp claim. So the long and the short of it is, it's a very strong recommendation of Yvonda, Karen, and myself, that we do make that payment to Montgomery County and basically resolve these claims once and for all. When I had emailed you back in January, we had thought the payment would be $275,000. The consultant we hired sort of worked those numbers with Montgomery County, and the payment at this point in time is $237,000. I did work with the city attorney's office to basically draft an agreement that would be signed by both parties before we would transmit a check, just to make sure there is no question whatsoever that the county could not come back to us. But that $237,000 payment is part of what you're seeing in the estimate for FY11, the $482,000 figure. Is everyone seeing what I'm talking about? So I did want to bring that up. We do need, we've spent a lot of time working with our consultant, working with Montgomery County, to try to get to a number that we felt was reasonable based on the claims that were there, the reserves they still have set up. So I did want to bring this issue up tonight mainly because I'd like to go ahead, we have two choices only under the contract. I'd like to go ahead and settle this before something else happens with these claims, quite candidly, that might change that number. And then this would need to come back to you as a budget amendment, just to kind of get the money in the right place. But is everyone comfortable with doing that?
Everybody comfortable?
I hope you have your attention this evening. Okay.
The interesting thing today in Rockville was when they had questions about this, it came out that the average, the nationwide average for lawyer, what was the word, phrase?
Legal representation.
Legal representation for workers' comp claims is 18%, and in Montgomery County it's 72%.
Yeah.
And they were relating that going on a ride-along in a fire department truck and finding the lawyer's card up on the visor in the truck. And I asked the city manager what our experience was, and she said we're more like, more like the county, not the nationwide average.
Yeah, I would need to look at the numbers. Coming from a different part of the country, I would say Maryland's workers' comp laws are very liberal and very geared towards the employee who's filing. I was shocked when I came here from the Midwest to find out that the employer did not direct kind of where somebody went to get medical treatment for workers' comp, that basically you can pick any doctor you want. And there's a whole structure, I think, in Maryland, not just, I don't want to give the impression Montgomery County's probably the only one who has a high percentage of representation. I think it's probably fairly standard across Maryland if I had to take a guess. So with that, I guess I will be bringing a budget amendment forward, but I will go ahead and working with the city attorney's office and finalize that agreement and sign that with Montgomery County. I apologize for taking time, but I just figured while we were on it, you saw a huge number.
Let's get out for under as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Services and charges in this budget are almost entirely different, other types of insurance. It's going to be our liability insurance, our property insurance, auto, and those type of things. Of the $121,000 you see in this budget for services and charges, $101,000 represents insurance costs for the city. One thing new in this line item that I did want to bring to the council's attention, and don't have all the details work out, but I have included $10,000 for coordination of cultural events. I think everyone would probably agree that Sarah Danes has just done a yeoman's job of trying to work on programming the auditorium. But candidly, Sarah is practically here almost every night of the week, often on weekends. And while she's done a great job at it, I don't think that's sustainable for her on a personal level. And candidly, I pay Sarah to be the director of Housing and Community Development, not to be running around making sure that chairs and tables are set up appropriately in the auditorium, or, you know, sending out email blasts nonstop. So Sarah and I are still sort of discussing what kind of structure might work, but I don't think having Sarah continue to perform this function is workable in the long run. So certainly, as we try to put a little bit more meat on the bone of the proposal, I'll bring that back to you, but did want to flag that for you in this budget.
And you might be successful at cloning?
I would love to. Miscellaneous expenditures in this budget are about 39%. The largest pieces under miscellaneous are the state homeowner's property tax credit supplement. This is something the city has done for many, many, many years. Probably either Mayor Williams or Councilmember Siemens might have to help me in terms of how far back this goes.
Way back.
Yeah, way, way back. I know during my seven years with the city, the past councils had voted to increase the amount of the supplement. This is, we're matching essentially a state credit. It has very specific requirements in terms of the assessed value of the property that qualifies for the supplement, and there are also income restrictions on this. We have generally about 165 to 170 residents, property owners, who benefit from this program every year. And I will say, it is a program that we get thank you letters from people who are clearly struggling to kind of hang on to their homes and are very appreciative of the assistance that the city has given in the past. Also, in the non-departmental budget miscellaneous is the charter required general contingency amount. By the charter, we are required to budget half a percent of general fund revenues, and this is historically where the city has booked that contingency account. Prior to getting the increased revenues from highway user, we had budgeted just about $97,000 for the general contingency account. With the increase in general fund revenues, I will need to go in and bump that number up, and it'll go up by about $519. Also miscellaneous, we have employee training, tuition reimbursement, and emergency assistance funding. This is something we started a number of years ago, and if my memory isn't faulty this late at night, I think Councilmember Siemens was the advocate for this several years ago. We do get donations through the stormwater billing process where people donate money. We're currently with a must, which is, let's see, Minister's United Silver Spring Tacoma, I think is the organization we currently contract with. And for the past few years, we have budgeted additional funds to supplement those stormwater fund donations, basically to help people who are facing utility shut-offs, you know, need temporary storage because of a fire or things of that nature. The other major expenditure under miscellaneous are the funds that we have historically given to certain community groups. We have about $42,000 in this year's budget as far as non-departmental, and these were previously discussed by the council. It's $15,000 for the Crossroad Farmers Market. $12,500 is what I included for the Independence Day Committee. I did want to note, this was just slightly less than what they had requested. From one year to another, they had requested about a 13% increase, and that seemed a little high, but I did want to flag for the council that the amount for the Independence Day Committee is increased from FY11, but not as much as they had requested. Small community grants program, Jesse and I had talked about this. We had $10,000 in this year's budget. I think we didn't allocate all of that, and there had been some discussion, I think particularly by Councilmember Clay, of maybe wanting to take a look at who we were giving grants to and for what purpose. So in talking to Jesse, we felt comfortable scaling this back slightly to 7,500, and then there's $7,000 for the Folk Festival Committee, which is something the council had previously indicated that it wanted. So that's kind of a non-departmental budget in a nutshell. It's not very flashy, but...
And the OTBA grant is in the Housing and Community Development, not in here?
Yes, that's correct. We've historically budgeted it there mainly because this view is sort of almost a business support function, very similar to what they do. Are any questions about...
Okay, last section.
The last section is the debt service, and this should be, you can either quote to your thing in the book, or actually everything in the book, we actually attach to the blue sheet. This is obviously, as the name would imply, where we account for all the principal and interest payments on the city's outstanding debt obligations. Probably the most important substantive issue for the council has to do with the 2002 community center bond issue, as I mentioned last Monday. The proposed budget includes the payment that is actually due, scheduled debt service payment for this bond issue, which is roughly about $158,000. I've also included in my recommended budget that we pay off the balance of this bond issue in June of 2012, which is the earliest time that it can be redeemed in accordance with the bond covenants. The projected payoff amount for the bond issue, and this is in addition to the $158,000... The projected payoff amount for the bond issue, and this is in addition to the $158,000, is $1.24 million. Yvonda and I kind of talked about this quite extensively. I think we have sufficient unreserved fund balance that we can pay off this bond issue early. And by doing so, we actually would save considerable money in terms of interest cost and trustee fees, as opposed to continuing to the 20-year maturity. If we redeem this bond in June of 2012, we'll save about $347,000 in interest cost and trustee fees over that 10-year period. So that's really the most substantive issue, I think, that the council needs to deal with in terms of the debt service budget.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
One in particular. Is the reason that you picked that one because it has, it has the date coming up when we can first do that? I was looking at other ones in this section, wondering if, for instance, the 2005 bond for the community center, which would save us a lot more interest, is that something that we can, have we reached the point in time when we can do that one instead?
We have not. Both bond issues, which we obtain through the state, cannot be redeemed until the 10-year maturity point. I do think that is a bond issue, Mayor Williams, that we should continue to watch, and if, as we go forward in time, you know, if we have savings perhaps from personnel costs or some other things, that we might want to start setting some money aside to eventually pay off that bond issue early, because it is a, both these bond issues have variable interest rates. And so it would behoove us to try to pay these off early if we can. Most of the other debt issuance, like the public works facility, or the issuance that we did to refinance the deficit with the state retirement system, all have lower interest rates than the two community center bond issues.
So the 10-year for the 2002 one is up, would be paid off in 2012, and likewise, the 2005?
Be 2015.
Would be paid off in 2015.
Yes. The two, a couple other things just to note about kind of the debt service budget. We will be paying off the street improvement bonds that the city took out in 2004. As I had mentioned last week, kind of, at least the past council policy has been that we had a $500,000 budget geared towards street rehabilitation for the time that these bonds were still outstanding. We would basically net whatever the debt service payment was from that $500,000 with the balance dedicated toward street improvements. I know Darrell feels very strongly that that $500,000 is a, is a good thing to do, to maintain our infrastructure. So even though we'll be paying this bond issue off in FY12, going forward, beginning in FY13, there's really no net budgetary savings from paying this one off. The good news is, we will be making the last payment on the capital lease for police cars. That lease payment has been about $49,000. Once it's paid off, it actually will be a net reduction in the budget, which will certainly provide some greater financial flexibility. Certainly, there's questions about any other of the bond or lease payments in the proposed budget, be happy to answer them, but pretty much the obligations we have, we are obligated to pay those. So I think really the point of discretion for the council is whether or not to redeem the 2002 community center bond issue early.
Questions?
Is that, is that a decision we make in 2012, or do we, do you need some guidance on that one now?
You know, I think if there was a sense from the council that you want to do it, you know, then I would include that it is a sizable amount of money.
Yes.
And it's very material to the 12 budget, so if the council's comfortable with it, it would be helpful to get that direction and include the funding in the budget. If you're not comfortable with it, similarly, we can take it out.
I'm comfortable with it.
Good question. Councilmember Schultz?
The payoff that bond on June 12, June 2012, will that have any effect on our operating, on virtue of the fact of reducing the city's overall debt load, do you think?
To date, Councilmember Schultz, the city has actually not gone through the formal rating process. When we have gotten bonds through the state program, and this was, I don't remember, if you were on the council at this time, you may not have been, but what the state infrastructure loan program has typically done is purchase bond insurance, and when you do that, you get an automatic AAA rating. Part of the reason we had such delayed financing for public works is the bond insurance market sort of fell apart. But the city itself has never gone out and actually secured a rating from Moody's or Standard and Poor's.
All positive.
Yeah, you can do that. It's, it's a very expensive process to go through, and we, at the day, haven't found the need to do that. But certainly, if we were to pursue the rating, having, they tend to look very strongly at your overall financial structure, and certainly not having debt that you don't need to have is a plus in that analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
I was just going to say, I'm in favor of paying it off. We're not like a corporation, or even an individual, where the money seems relatively cheap, and you would think we could invest the capital that we have in some way to beat 4%, but we're obligated to invest in very safe things. And as you reported earlier, our potential to earn revenue on those funds is very small, so the opportunity cost of not doing it seems sort of invasive, unless we're going to choose to return that money somehow to the taxpayers, which I don't think we're going to do.
Any other questions?
The only thing I would just say is, obviously, we have more hearings on Thursday night. If there are questions, either about the budgets Thursday evening, or just any of the budgets, as you've had a chance to look through the document, and there's additional information I can provide, please just shoot me an email, and, you know, we'll make sure we get that to you.
And I was going to note that I dug up a spreadsheet that I put together years ago. It's not quite up to date, but I'll provide it maybe to the city manager and see if she wants to update it. I would if I had to, but she might want to, and we can distribute it. And it's basically a property tax revenues and expenditures history, rate history on what the city has done basically since 1986, if anybody wants a little perspective going back at this point, almost 25 years.
The only other thing is Jesse's getting ready to pass these around. These are the agenda packets for Thursday evening. Councilmember Schultz, we will be posting this online. Obviously, I can't get your packet to you in South Carolina, but we'll have, we'll have everything posted tomorrow.
We don't have a volunteer messenger?
Yeah, that's on the initiative that you, you put out to council members. If you could send me a copy of that by email, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we will do that.
And I believe that's Sam.
Sam to you, King to Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah. Any other questions for other business? Return.
All right, love it, love it, love it.